Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I will call to order this business meeting of the Bloomington City Council Monday, February 27, 2023. Thank you all very much for joining us this evening, both here in the chambers and online. We will start our meeting as we always do. If you could, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, good evening to everyone, and thank you for being here. I see we have some scouts in the audience. Good evening, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, welcome. Thank you for being here. Glad to see you. We do have Councilmember Carter joining us remotely from, I believe, Washington DC this evening, and so we will call the roll call of the council, and we'll be having to call the roll every time we do a vote as well. So, Mr. Brillard, if you could call the roll call of the council, please.
Councilmember Carter.
Present.
Councilmember Moa.
Present.
Councilmember Loman.
Here.
Councilmember Nelson.
Here.
Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
Present.
Mayor Bussey.
Here.
Records show all seven members of the Bloomington City Council are present at this time. Our first item on our agenda is the approval of tonight's agenda, and we've got an agenda this evening that includes in our introductory items, introduction of some new employees here at the city of Bloomington. We're going to get an update from our partners at the Three Rivers Park District about the Highland Greens Golf Course and the work that they've been doing over the past couple of years. We're going to hear the annual report and the 2023 work plan for the Human Rights Commission, and that will wrap up our introductory items. We have eighteen items on our consent business. Councilmember DeLisandro has our consent agenda this evening. Under item four, our hearings, resolutions, and ordinances, we've got a public hearing regarding the DEB CO host approval. Ms. Economy Scholder from our Finance Department will be leading us through that. A public hearing on a new on-sale intoxicating liquor license application for Fogo Gauchao?
Fogo Gauchao.
Fogo Gauchao, thank you. Fogo Gauchao. A public hearing also regarding the Board of Review eligibility ordinance requirements. We will be making appointments to our Bloomington Board of Review. And then a public hearing regarding the Minnesota Investment Fund and Job Creation Fund application that's been submitted by Polar Semiconductor. Under organizational business, we have a license code update discussion, an update on our ranked choice voting, the discussion also of our public health near-term facility needs, and of course, we will wrap up the evening with item 5.4, our City Council Policy and Issue Update. Council, any corrections, additions, anything we want to discuss on this? Hearing none, I would move approval of tonight's agenda.
Second.
We got a motion and a second by Councilmember Loman to accept tonight's agenda. No further council discussion on this. Mr. Brillard.
Carter.
Aye.
Moa.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
DeLisandro.
Aye.
Mayor Bussey.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero, and we have an agenda. Our first item of the evening is introduction of new employees, and we do this on a regular basis here at our council meetings to make sure that as we get new employees on board, on staff in the city of Bloomington, that we have an opportunity to meet them here in front of the council, but also an opportunity to have new employees introduce themselves on camera to the city at large, so if and when they're out and about in the city or working behind a desk or a counter here at City Hall, the folks who they are dealing with will know who they are, at least have a prior introduction a bit. And we have, I'm seeing three, I think, new employees that we are going to introduce. Is anybody going to facilitate this, or am I doing the introductions? Sure, bring it on.
Mayor, city manager and council, I would like to introduce Ian Breckie, who is the new Center for the Arts Manager. Ian started two weeks ago, so he got a real decent crash course in canceling events last week, and he's still here, so he came back. So if Ian would like to join me at the podium, this is Ian Breckie, the new Center for the Arts Manager.
Good evening, Ian, welcome.
Thank you all. Thank you so much for your time, allowing me to speak with you all. Just a little background on me, I grew up in Minnesota, but recently moved back here from California, actually. I had a sixteen-year run out there that started with school and then led to a decade-long teaching career out there, actually. So I was most recently a tenured college professor in the Bay Area for a music department and was actually the music department chair for five years there. Led back here for family, essentially. So I found this position and I was very excited for the opportunity, not just for the actual work itself, but learning more about Bloomington and learning more about this council, it became very clear to me that there has been a decade, there have been multiple decades in a row where this council has supported the arts over and over, and this city has supported the arts over and over. I don't think you can actually separate art and culture from one another. They are one and the same, and just the fact that city council chambers are in the Center for the Arts is telling to me. So that, to me, was all the more reason to be excited for this position, and I'm sincerely looking forward to the opportunity to continue to collaborate on serving this community to further the arts. Thank you so much for your time.
Well, thank you, and thanks for being with us this evening, to come and say hello, and thank you for making the trip back from the left coast to middle America here. We're very glad to have you and happy to have you onboard.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Welcome.
Mayor, councilmembers, Allison Warren, Recreation Manager, and I am here to present two new employees in the Parks and Recreation Department. We have two recreation program coordinators that are part-time. They both started a little less than a month ago, and first, we have Matt Caldwell, and I would like to be happy to announce that he is one of NRPA's 30 Under 30, and so we are very lucky to have him here in Bloomington, but I will let him introduce himself more to you.
Hello, Mayor, members of the council. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to come up and introduce myself here formally. So as Allison said, my name is Matt Caldwell. I grew up in Ham Lake, Minnesota, but I currently live in South Minneapolis. I have about four years of experience working in Parks and Recreation. Before coming to Bloomington, I was working for the city of Mendota Heights. I'm really excited to be here in Bloomington because among Parks and Recreation professionals, Bloomington has a reputation for not only being a great place to work, but also for offering some of the most high-quality and diverse recreation programming of anywhere in the state. So to be able to be here and to be a part of that and to be working with such a great team is something I'm really excited about. So thank you very much for your time.
Well, Matt, thank you. Thanks for coming this evening. Thanks for joining the crew here. Looking forward to it, looking, excited to see what is on tap for this spring and summer, especially in our Park and Rec Department, so welcome aboard.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, councilmembers, second but not least, I have Anthony Dibella, and he is another program coordinator here, part-time, working for us, and he is assisting with our adult sports, ice rinks, and anything in between. If he is, if you're looking to schedule a field in one of our 97 parks, he is the guy to go to, but I'll let him tell you more about himself as well.
Good evening, Anthony, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Born in Bloomington, still live in Bloomington, actually. A year ago last summer, I actually bought my parents' house, the house I grew up in, so excited to be here and to work for the city that I grew up in, that gave back to me, so. But I have experience in other park and recreation departments such as St. Cloud and Minneapolis, so excited to showcase my skills and abilities for the residents of Bloomington. Happy to be here, have experience school-wise in St. Cloud and at St. Mary's, where I got my master's degree, but again, excited to serve Bloomington residents, excited to serve the city that I live and grew up in.
Well, that's very cool. We're glad to have you onboard, and I always think it's cool, people who buy the house they grew up in, you can tell that it's a good thing.
Yeah, definitely.
Good, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And Ms. Henderson, we have one more introduction.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. I am so pleased to introduce our new Port Authority Administrator, Holly Masek. Born in New Hampshire, spent a lot of time in Boston because she holds a Bachelor's of Arts degree from Boston University and a Master's in Urban Planning from Harvard University. She has background in urban design, redevelopment, real estate, and public space consulting. She's the former Executive Director from the Rochester Downtown Alliance, and in her free time, she loves to travel, spending time outdoors, and she said she's a failed master gardener because she couldn't commit to the required hours, and so I told her, Mr. Mayor, that you may be able to help her in that arena. So Holly.
Oh, yes. Good evening, Mayor and council and city teammates. Nice to meet you all, thank you for having me. I can be your East Coast representative, now I've got a West Coast, East Coast. Yeah, fast talkers, cover the country. Yes, I do have a, I came most recently from Rochester, where I did manage the Downtown Improvement District. I have a passion for city building, my background's in urban planning, and I'm excited to work with the Port Authority team. I also am, yes, I'm a failed master gardener. The old St. County Gardeners are a very intense crew, so I do, I do like plants a lot, but I just can't commit fifty hours of volunteer time to them. So if anybody has perennials they want to split with me, give me a call, all right.
I am right there with you. I can't stack up to the master gardeners in any way, shape, or form, but more than happy to garden, but I can't wear the title of master because I don't have the time or the, I'm not that good, so.
But you know, we can do some amateur gardening together if you want.
Perfect. We had the, council, we had the opportunity of welcoming Holly at our Port Authority meeting last week, and so we're happy to make that introduction and get that underway. And you know, and we all know, you have a big job and you've got a lot ahead of you. There's a lot of work that's going to be done, and I'm very excited to see where the Port Authority with its restructured and reconfigured responsibilities takes us over the next few years here in the city of Bloomington, and we're glad to have you onboard to lead that effort.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, I just want to add one thing, Mr. Mayor, which I think you'll appreciate. So last year, when we were on that ICLV trip, Stephanie Brown, who is the Director of the Urban Land Institute for the State of Minnesota, when I first met her, she said, well, you know, if you have any positions, send them my way, and I'll throw them out to my network. And I did when this position became vacant, and then I saw her on that trip, and I got on that bus, and I said, Stephanie, I sent you that job posting, don't you have somebody in mind? And she said, you're right, I'll think about it. And the next day, she said, I think I have your person, and she recommended Holly. So Holly wasn't looking for a position, but that trip got us our next port administrator, so.
Perfect.
So approve all the travel expenses.
Well, thank you. So Holly, Ian, Anthony, Matt, thanks very much for being here this evening. Welcome, we're very glad to have you onboard, and a round of applause for our new employees. Next up on our agenda is item 2.2, and that is an update on the Highland Greens Golf Course from our partners at Three Rivers Park District. As you know, council, and I'm sure others know, a couple of years ago, the city went into an agreement with Three Rivers Park District and turned over the operation of Highland Greens to Three Rivers Park District for a variety of reasons, not the least of which, the fact that these folks know how to run a par-three golf course, and they do an excellent job with it, and played on a number of their courses through the course of my lifetime, actually, have played on their par-three golf courses, and we were just so fortunate to get into this agreement and this partnership, this strong partnership that already existed that was strengthened by the fact that we moved into this agreement with Highland Greens. And so I'd like to call this item and introduce and call forward the, I believe, the Chair now of the Three Rivers Park District, Mr. John Gibbs, and the Superintendent of Three Rivers Park District, Bo Carlson. Gentlemen, good evening, welcome, so glad to have you here.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. John Gibbs will sign in here, but I am Chair, honored to be able to chair the Three Rivers District, but more pleased with the opportunity and pleasure of being able to represent Bloomington and Richfield and Eden Prairie on the Three Rivers District. Bo is going to do the heavy lifting, I was to do the setup. So let me just share with you that one of the hallmarks of this era of the Three Rivers Park District are partnerships and alignments, and really trying to stay focused on what we think we do best and our core competencies, which are natural resources management, operating regional open space parks, skiing, and golfing. And we do that in partnership as well as in our own facilities, so our partnerships outside of Hattaway County would be Scott County and Carver, and we've got some Wright County and some Ramsey County properties, and some meaningful partners within suburban Hattaway County and Bloomington, clearly a very meaningful partner. We wanted to share with you tonight our perspective on, after two years, how it's going with our three-year understanding relative to Highland Greens, and so to really do this correctly, Bo Carlson, our superintendent's going to give this report.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Gibbs, and thank you, Commissioner, for your service. I know you were elected last fall, re-elected last fall again, and one more time, re-upped, and we appreciate your leadership in this and all that you do for Bloomington, and I know the care and the passion that you put into your work, especially for the city of Bloomington, so thank you so very much for that. Mr. Carlson, good evening.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, thank you, thank you for having me. Bo Carlson, Superintendent of Three Rivers Park District, and happy again to be in front of you and sharing a little tidbits on Highland Greens and kind of where we're at with the relationship between the Park District and the city of Bloomington. So as was mentioned before, Bloomington and the Park District entered into an agreement for the operation of Highland Greens back in 2021. That was intended to be a three-year term, ending at December 31 of 2023. So this will be our third year of operation, an opportunity for us to really assess its success and see kind of where we're at historically in the perspective of how are we going to do this long-term? Is this course functional, operational, and actually sustainable long-term? And that's one of the things that we've tried to assess and look at, going from an operation in 2020 that was closed down, non-existent, so going from nothing and building up that core back to what we have. And we think we're getting there from an operational standpoint. We did 24,000 rounds last year, that's up from about 20,000 rounds, or just under 20,000 rounds in year 2021. We actually had a little worse weather last year than we did the year before. If you remember, 2021, it was one of the nicest summers I think we've had in many, many years, so we had a very wet spring last year, so unfortunately, despite that, I should say, we still were able to not only hit those previously, previous year numbers, we were able to surpass them. We had about 20,000 range visits, which actually netted about 128,000 in revenue, which is a very strong number when you look in the golf business overall. We also were able to make some improvements to the range to actually replace the bent grass with a rye grass that's much more durable, that gives us more depth, it also gives us more days where people are hitting off of actual grass versus mats. The golfing world is kind of snobs when it comes to the type of surface that they hit off of, and they would prefer to hit off grass surface than the mat surface, so again, this just gives us more time where we will have grass service versus that mat service, particularly in the spring when it's really wet or muddy as we go forward. Lesson revenue, this is the big success, and this is the component for us that really speaks to why we bring, I think, a unique product to the table is the fact that we do have a robust lesson program, and it's through our first tee program, so it's a lot targeted towards kids programs. We did 57,000 in revenue, that was up from about 8,000 the year prior, so you can see a significant uptick in revenue opportunities there, and that will only continue to grow as we go more into the future with that. We had seven outside leagues, that's about what was had prior to closing, so most of those leagues came back, which was great. We also host two high school teams, both Kennedy and Jefferson, so it's great to have the home schools practice out there, and we actually have a junior high team that comes all the way from Richfield to practice. So that's great to see that we're attracting some of those younger golfers, because really, that's what's going to sustain again the future of the operation. Overall, we hit about 650,000 in revenue, that's an increase from about 475,000 the year prior, so numbers are strong from a revenue standpoint. We'd like to still see them drive up a little bit higher, and I think the real capacity in those numbers I shared is in that lesson piece. I think there's a good opportunity to push that number up to 75, maybe even 100,000 in revenue overall. The bottom line, we were able to clear actually about $65,000, so the efficiency in this operation that we actually run it in partnership with the Glen Lake Golf Course in Minnetonka and Eden Prairie, we share staff between the two locations, and we also share maintenance staff, so that efficiency and operation enables us to keep our expenditures down, which allows us, even in those years where maybe revenue isn't quite what we were hoping, we're still able to surpass that and run an operation in the black. So just to highlight a couple things that we've been able to do in addition to just the numbers that we're talking about, some improvements on the site, and I think the accessibility, the playability, the experiential things that'll bring people back. In 2021, we did a lot of improvements inside the building itself, you can see the picture on the right-hand side there, all-new carpeting, new paint, new walls, new windows in the sunroom there on the edge, and you can see from the exterior, a very nice exterior look. We covered over the brick that was there and have actually a plywood surfacing that's a little bit more waterproof as well, which is good to prevent some of the leaking that was going on into the building itself. You'll notice on the left-hand side of the sunroom there, we actually took that car corral that had been out there for years, and we moved that down into the parking lot. We created a little patio seating area where people can sit out, actually enjoy something to eat, a drink, a beverage, whatever it might be, and watch people teeing off in the first tee. It creates kind of a nice atmosphere as teams are, or as players are queuing both to come and to leave the golf course, so that was also a nice addition to the building itself that we were able to provide. Go to the next slide. And then on-course improvements, one of the big ones was we were able in 2021, we rebuilt every sand trap on the golf course. So we went out, we actually had a couple that we took out of service that were a little too difficult, we filled those in, we had many, though, that we were able to actually dig them totally up, re-line them, and then refill them with sand, and it was all staff, again, because of the efficiency of the operation, we brought staff in from Baker National, it was all in-house work, it was all something we were able to do, we knocked it out in about two days to not impact play and to keep that going. Again, you can see our instruction program that does bring another whole element, whether that's youth lessons or individual private lessons, it's just another aspect of that service level that we want to provide down at Highland Greens. And then you can see a little bit the picture of the replacement of the turf at the range itself, again, lengthening and widening it, making it more deep, that allows us to shift and rotate the grass and the impact on the grass, again, getting more people onto the surface itself. And again, another piece of work that we all do in-house and we were able to handle internally, but it just adds to the service of the golf course itself. So I think I'm fairly comfortable in saying from an operational standpoint, we're in a pretty good position. I think we're feeling pretty confident that we're in a position that operationally, we have the formula that we can continue to add to it, but we're starting to get people coming back, and there's some things that are there. There are some things that we need to be aware of, and I think some long-term challenges that are going to be a difficult element of us going forward, and we need to keep that in mind as we continue the conversations related to the partnership. The first one, which is a big one, and I'm sure anybody that's been out there recently has noticed, we have an Emerald Ashbore issue, as the city of Bloomington does. About two years ago in 2021, when we took over the course, we had pretty serious storm damage from the previous year that hadn't been addressed. As we were going in and starting to cut and look at what the condition of the trees were, we discovered six highly infested trees in the golf course itself. Emerald Ashbore, as I'm sure you all know, essentially, if you find it in one location, it's assumed to be in every tree that's in that proximity to where those trees are, and sure enough, we have found further deterioration in the trees themselves. So we're in the process now of removing all the ash trees from the course. We're about 75 trees into that removal, there's going to be about another 75 that are going to need to come out. That was a course that, for whatever reason, predominantly had ash trees planted. Again, I'm guessing low maintenance, they grow very fast, they kind of fill a need based on golf and separating holes and that kind of thing, so it does look pretty bad right now, and it's something we will be addressing with tree replacements, and we'll be replacing all those trees that ultimately we are taking out. But at this point, due to the level of infestation, there is not treatment that would be capable of saving those trees that are currently infected, and it is a safety issue. As we know, Ashbore gets extremely brittle from the top down, branches start snapping off when you've got an active golf course, where you get people in all locations trying to find their ball and that kind of thing, it's not good to have trees breaking off. We've got an irrigation pump and a control system that is probably 50 or 60 years old. It's impossible for the control device to find replacement parts at all. The pump itself is beyond its useful life and will need to be replaced at some point. Just the irrigation pump and control, we're probably talking in the range of $150,000 for replacement there. We've got, obviously, building age and condition, both the maintenance facility and the building itself, both are in dire need of roof replacements, we've got HVAC issues on both the clubhouse and the maintenance facility that, again, they're beyond their normal lifespan or life cycle, and we should look at some form of replacement themselves, so that will have to be something that's tackled at some point. And then obviously, just an ongoing theme that we've had, signage, visual appeal, any of the curb-side appeal that we can do to bring people into the course, obviously, it's a great location and a highly densely populated area, we're right off Normandale Boulevard, which is fantastic from an access standpoint. We don't have much out there as far as signage for people to actually see where the golf course is located, we have kind of a small sign on Normandale that just directs people that the golf course is there, I don't think it even says Highland Greens if I remember correctly, but it would be nice to have some more signage opportunities out there. And the other one, obviously, and we've talked about this repeatedly, is the fence, the proximity or perimeter fence that's out there, particularly on Normandale Boulevard, is a bit of an eyesore that needs to be dealt with. It's a big expense, we've gotten bids both years in the operation and have looked at those and looked at what we were trying to do with getting our feet under us, and it just was not in a position where we were able financially to take that leap, but it is something that at some point I think we need to tackle that. So there's some things we need to look out for, things I think we need to be aware of and recognize from an investment standpoint. In order to make any golf operation work and be successful long-term and sustainable, you've got to invest back into it. That really is kind of the key to success, we've certainly seen that in our system, and I think other golf operations that have been out there recognize that the only way you can keep up with those things in their useful lifespan is just to put the money right back into the operation. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I think that concludes my presentation. I do have copies, I'm happy to provide or certainly answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson, greatly appreciated. Council, any questions? And Councilmember Carter, if you have a question, give a big wave, okay, just so we make sure I don't miss you, okay? Was that a wave with a question, or were you just practicing? Okay, Councilmember Carter, and then Councilmember Nelson, Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't actually have a question, I just want to say that I have heard a lot of really positive feedback over the past couple of years from residents who are golfers and like to take their kids golfing, or grandparents and their grandkids go and golfing. I also will say I took the women's golf lessons last summer, and they were fantastic, I had so much fun, and I think I'm just going to take them again this year because it was fun and like, let's be real, I need more lessons, but just want to say thank you, congratulations, I'm glad the partnership is working out so well, and the outcomes are good and positive. I totally understand that we have some challenging conversations ahead of us, but... but overall, I'm just really happy that we went down this path, and thank you again for your partnership.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson, and then Councilmember Lowman, Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Gibbs, who happens to be in my district and reached out to me proactively about the ash trees so that I could help residents, because I did hear from a number of people about why are they cutting all the trees down at the golf course? So thank you for doing that and sharing that information. And just for clarification, it is the intention, Three Rivers has, for lack of a better term, a nursery? I don't know, I'll turn to the master gardener for the right term. So, but you're going to replace the trees at least one-for-one from a different Three Rivers location, is that right?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, that is our intent. So we grow all the plant material that we plant throughout our parks, in our parks. So at our nursery, we plant a couple hundred thousand trees a year. So 150 trees is pretty easy to replace. One of the other elements that really needs to be considered in golf architecture is a little bit different than just park trees that are obviously nice amenities, and they contribute to the beauty and the aesthetic of the park. Trees in a golf course actually serve a purpose. They provide some separation, some protection, and even some delineation between various holes. So there are areas where we might be concerned with range traffic or range balls going into the playable area or into a hole that will want to kind of tightly line that area with more trees. Because of the age of the ash trees that were out there, we'll probably have to plant predominantly more trees just to meet the need that those aged or older-aged ash trees were providing for us. So yeah, I think one-to-one at a minimum is what we're committed to, and then really looking at the playability and the architecture of the course itself.
Right, so it seems apparent that you've seen me golf if you're talking about protection from trees. It's, so my second question is the capital improvements that you've already made, some of the updates in the building with the carpeting, with the windows and things like that, the sand traps, the patio, all of that. How were those in the budget? Did they come out of operating revenue, and you still had, for lack of a better term, a profit? Or did those come out of a different capital account, or how did that work?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, great question. So a lot of those things are just investments that had to be made for us to have a golf course. If we were going to have an operational golf course, you had to have sand traps that didn't have plants growing in them. So we were able to invest, I think, as economically as we could from the idea that we already had efficiencies in in-house work and staffing that were there, and it was mostly materials. So we were able to identify those material costs for those replacements or improvements, and we've been able to cover those in either the operational expenditures or the internal budget itself related to Highland Greens. Where we haven't maybe been able to identify those is when it comes to some of our labor costs, but we do see that as soft costs that we would have had anyway in the operation, and they really have to be done. So again, I would say because of the efficiency of the partnership and the efficiency of us being in the golf business, it allowed us to stretch those dollars and get more done.
Well, I appreciate that. I think that was one of the goals when we originally talked about that, is given the number of places you operate, that there would be those efficiencies. So good to see those improvements. Last question I have is related to the building. You noted that the roof and the HVAC system needs to be replaced. Is there any consideration of doing something completely different? Or are you just looking to improve that existing building and make it enjoyable to be in in comparison to its previous condition?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, there are some concerns with the building related to ADA. It is, has some accessibility challenges. I think that's something we're going to have to look at if we're going to be a long-term user of that facility as our clubhouse slash food grill, snack grill, whatever you want to call it. A couple main considerations related to the HVAC system and the roof itself. It's a roof-mounted HVAC system right now. We'd like to pull that off that roof and do potentially maybe a mini-split that you could have either in the sunroom or the main room. The beauty of that operation is, obviously, it's a seasonal operation. We don't have a winter operation down there right now. You're talking mainly about cooling, so a mini-split would be much more economical related to keeping that building cool in the sun area, and it would have a lot less impact on the roof itself. It would then allow us to get in there and do that roof, which, again, desperately needs to be done. That's what's leading to some of the leaking issues, some of the mold issues that you're having in the basement, and some of the smell issues that have been there in the past.
Councilmember Lowman.
Thank you, Mayor. Wanted to just mention how much I appreciate the partnership and the opportunity that provides for the taxpayers to kind of take advantage of what you're able to do and we're able to concentrate on other things. And one of the things that I've appreciated in my short chance to be there is just the focus on customer service and that excellent customer service that each of the, of course, that's demonstrated by the numbers of folks who are returning. So again, want to appreciate that. One of the things that, as I looked at the presentation, that I didn't see that I saw when this came before this body a number of years ago was the concern with the marketplace with respect to young people being interested in golf. And I wanted to just see, does that still exist? Or are we somehow immune to that with respect to what we got going on here with this?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lowman, great question, and I should have brought that up in my presentation. But you know, and I think I said this last year, one of the best things that ever happened to golf and to skiing as well, we have the same situation at Highland Hills in Bloomington, city of Bloomington, is that COVID has brought people out to those two activities in droves. It's really incredible. We had a record year in our golf business across the board in 2020. We beat that in 2021, and we beat that in 2022. So golf numbers are through the roof, and it is in all aspects of the game. The beauty of our system and what we've tried to kind of focus our niche on is junior golf and seniors. We really feel that those are the areas that can sustain the game long-term, particularly the junior golf aspect, that we're teaching people to be lifetime golfers. They're going to come back for years and years. Our first tee program allows us to do that. As I mentioned in the lesson program, seeing the growth in that is a great first step in continuing to see that grow. But I don't have any concerns with the numbers from a popularity standpoint. Again, 25,000 rounds for a par-three golf course is pretty impressive when you look at the market and you look at the industry. A lot of that is due to the high population base that we have right here and in the location of that golf course. It also helps because of the fact, as I mentioned before, we really look at this as a partner location, the Glen Lake Golf Course. We have an opportunity to cross-promote, and we also have an opportunity to direct people to Highland Greens. So when we do have capacity issues at Glen Lake, we actually do suggest to them, check out Highland Greens. It's a very similar facility, a very similar operation.
I'll certainly appreciate that. I know when I was out there, they encouraged me to bring my daughter along with to learn some golfing. Finally, as we look to the future of that partnership, so I'm glad to hear about that marketing piece. I know that one point, maybe this is not a question for you, maybe this is a question for the manager and mayor, that we were looking at trying to have either the golf museum here or some type of PGA of the Midwest. I don't know if that is still in the, as a possibility as we look to continue this conversation, but I'm just curious where that's at and if that's even a possibility as we look forward with this particular partnership.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Lowman, that was a separate conversation that was occurring simultaneously. And there was, at that time, some interest from the Minnesota PGA Division, and they had some staffing change and some mission change and COVID and everything else that happened. So I think that got put on the back burner. Interesting that you should ask, because I just had a conversation within the last month or so about whether there's potentially some interest in renewing those conversations. So I'm waiting to hear back from parties on that.
And the only reason why I mentioned that, Mayor and manager, is that with the condition of that building, I just wonder if there's some opportunities for additional partnerships there to try to take advantage of that and provide additional opportunities for not only the region, but also for our taxpayers to take advantage of that, so.
Councilmember DeLaSandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for the update. And Mr. Gibbs, I know I owe you a call, so apologies for that. The, yeah, I will say a couple of things. One, I have enjoyed being at Highland thoroughly. I echo the sentiments of Councilmember Carter in saying that it's been one of my favorite things to do over the last couple of years, and it's so accessible. And don't discount the number of women that's probably showing up there, because there are a lot of them. I brought six or seven of my friends, and for the first time in a long time, they've played golf, and then they went to lessons and things like that. And so it's a really great opportunity, and I think your partnership with us has been really great about, in order to like, you know, make it feel like it's something that's so accessible. That's the benefit of having a par-three course. 18-hole golf courses with, you know, par-fives can be really daunting and intimidating. A par-three course is where everybody can start, and nobody feels weird about it, and so thanks for that. Shameless plug, the porta-potties out there are also amazing. So I'm just throwing that out there. That's really, really important. I don't want, I mean, as a woman playing golf, it's really, really important, and you guys are nailing it, so thank you for that. I have two questions from a more fiscal perspective. The first one being that, number one, you mentioned the infrastructure and the capital project. I'm guessing that we have some obligation as the owner of the property to be a part of that conversation. Am I correct in that assumption? Okay. So then, is there an expectation that some, as we go into, you know, later in the fall here or whatever, as you're considering whether or not to continue the partnership and everything, that that would be part of the conversations? Is, am I reading the tea leaves correctly here? Okay. When do we kind of anticipate those conversations starting?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, we've talked about getting through this first term agreement and then having that conversation. So I think later this year is probably when we will start to have that discussion.
Okay, and the intent is that any further term agreement, should it happen, would happen, would be in place prior to the next season then?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember DeLaSandro, I think it's reasonable to expect that somebody who's going to be operating on our behalf would be interested in what the future for facility improvements might include. So I think that's going to happen whether or not.
Okay, yep, very good, very good. And then the second question, you mentioned about the trees. Is there a long-term plan then? So, you know, replace a tree that's 60, 70 years old with a tree that, two trees that are 20 years old to try to kind of create the cover. Does one of those have to be removed at some point? Or how does the tree management process work? I would hate for us to set people up to think that we're doing like, more than one-for-one, and then they come back, you know, 20 years later, and now all the trees are gone again, and they don't know why, or whatever. I'm just kind of curious how that works.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember DeLaSandro, so great question. So again, because of the size and the organization of the Park District and the fact that we have our Natural Resources Department, and not only our nursery up at Crowhassan, but also our Forestry Division, they've actually been out and worked with Bill Volbrecht, who's our maintenance supervisor that represents the golf course. And fortunately, Bill started our Forestry Department, so he's a tree guy. He knows what he's talking about, in addition to growing grass very well. But, so they have all those conversations, and they've been having those conversations. And it's a combination, I think, of ball-and-bag trees, tree spade, and then small plantings. And we're going to have to look at as much of that as we possibly can. So there are going to be areas where we're going to more densely plant. There are going to be areas that we might move trees around after a year or two, seeing kind of... And there's always morbidity issues that come with planting trees as well that we'll have to be concerned about. So while we will intend on replacing and will replace all those trees that are being removed, we can't guarantee 100% that all of them will ultimately survive, but I think some of that will happen as the course matures, as those trees mature, and we start to see the layout of what's going on out there. One of the key components, I think, and it's an issue that we've dealt with district-wide, as I'm sure the city of Bloomington is, is the diversification, eh, can't say that, diversification of species. One of the challenges with ashbore is obviously when Dutch elm came, ash trees got planted very quickly because they're a fast-growing, low-maintenance tree, and now we're living with that history. So we want to be smart about what we plant. We also want to recognize resilience in our trees because we do see some changes in our climate. We see changes in the amount of rainfall that we're having out there. So we need to make wise choices, and then we need to maintain those trees and maintain them well.
Councilmember Nelson, another one?
Thank you, Mayor. Just very quickly, as we get into the discussions, I would hope that we also have some discussion regarding the vacant 10 acres that is out there, and if Three Rivers, the city, has ideas on how to better utilize that. I think that is part and parcel of the fence issue there. And then also winter uses and potentially making that a location that people can enjoy all year round, which I think gets into the building and the capital expenses. I don't obviously expect specifics tonight, but I just, I would encourage us to get into the conversation with them as soon as possible to maybe put a little bit even more on the table there with regards to that location. So, but very excited by what you've done there and the numbers of people going there, the financial model. I think it's exactly what we were looking for when we first talked about this, and so, well done.
Thank you.
Counsel, any additional questions? Well, a lack of trees and sand traps, I'm hearing a links course is what I'm hearing right now. Something to keep in mind. Mr. Carlson, thank you so very much for the update, appreciate it. Look forward to seeing how the season goes for you, and hopefully we'll get to that season sooner rather than later, and looking forward to our conversations this fall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel.
Mr. Chair, thank you for being here as well. Our final item under our introductory items is item 2.3, and that is the 2022 Annual Report and the 2023 Work Plan for our Human Rights Commission. And joining us this evening is Molly Bosu, our Chair of our Human Rights Commission. Chair Bosu, good evening, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you so much, Mayor Bosu, and councilmembers. It's so good to be here tonight. And tonight, I'm going to be sharing our Human Rights Commission's annual report from 2022 and some overview of our 2023 work plan. So we have a presentation. I can keep talking. Oh, okay.
I don't have one in the folder, but I will work quickly at one really quickly.
Okay. All right, well, I can start us out. Would you like me to just go?
If you're okay going without the presentation, it's, yeah, please.
Yeah, sure, okay. So the Human Rights Commission is a commission of nine members. We have seven adult members and two youth. We have welcomed some new commissioners over the course of the year. So over 2022, we've had a little bit of turnover. We are also this year really happy to be working with Amanda Crombie of CoEd. And so she currently is our interim staff liaison. And although this may be a really, potentially a temporary position for her, she is doing, taking on this new role with her full commitment and support for the commission. So I'll begin tonight with our 2022 Annual Report, providing highlights of our work this past year. Our 2022 work plan was organized into categories. And I have a quick question. Do you have the presentation in your, okay. Great, great, that's even better, okay. So if you are looking at the presentation, on the following slide, so on the following slides, I'm going to be highlighting four of the initiatives that you see here. But of course, if you have any questions about the remaining initiatives, there's additional information in the appendix of this presentation, which you can find in your agenda packet, and I'd be happy to answer any other questions as we go forward. So we started our year out by purchasing and donating over 200 books to the Bloomington Public Library System, sorry, not Bloomington Public Library, the Bloomington Public School Library System. These books reflected the work and the ideals of Dr. Martin Luther King and focused on themes of diversity, equity, and inclusion. They were selected by media center staff, and they were purchased in both English and Spanish. Perfect, thank you. In June, so we can move on to the next slide. In June of 2021, the City Council, in June of 2021, the City Council passed a resolution directing city staff, the Human Rights Commission, and the Planning Commission to work with the Justies Coalition on community education about racial leaderships of covenants and Bloomington properties. And since then, we've been working to do just that. Currently, there's been 87 or 86 requests in queue for discharge. And in August of this past year, we hosted a community event at Bryant Park that included food, speakers, and discussion circles. The Justies Initiative is also a continued initiative for our current work plan. This past year, the Human Rights Commission partnered with organizations to host the Come As You Are Art Exhibition at the Inez Greenberg Gallery. This exhibition celebrated the LGBTQ plus community and the 50th anniversary of Twin Cities Pride. And then following that up, we... And then following that up, we partnered with the city and community members to host the Second Annual Bloomington Pride Celebration, in which over 3,000 community members joined in for music, activities, and food. Pride celebrates the contributions, struggles, and achievements of the LGBTQ plus community, the fight for equality of all people, and the creation of spaces of belonging and safety for our residents. During several conversations at our monthly meetings, our commissioners really conveyed a clear desire to make more meaningful connections with other Bloomington Boarding Commissions. These conversations were really the impetus of our first joint meeting of Boarding Commission Chairs that was held this past December. During this meeting, we shared our work plan goals. We discussed where we saw really a lot of alignment in many of our work plans. We connected with one another and brainstormed how to best collaborate. We plan on making these meetings regular and hopefully holding our next one very soon. So I'll now move on to an overview of our upcoming work plan. Our 2023 work plan is structured slightly different than our 2022 work plan was. You can see the categories listed here. We spent several meetings developing and finalizing our work plan in order to bring it here to you tonight. Early stages were spent reflecting on previous work plans, community feedback, city initiatives, and initiatives of other cities in order to develop a list of potential opportunities and needs. After this, commissioners narrowed in on the initiatives that we really believed had the highest need and the most potential for collaboration. The work plan is structured into three main categories: annual initiatives, work group initiatives, and partnerships. And I'll touch on each of these throughout the present, the rest of the presentation. Our annual initiatives include proclamations of the commission drafts and presents to council and the Omar Bondrood Human Rights Award. In terms of the Omar Bondrood Human Rights Award, we will be reviewing some of the aspects of the application and the scoring criteria this year to ensure that it's accessible to all of our residents and to improve the equity of our review process. We believe that both proclamations and the award, although there are more ceremonial aspects of what we do and the work that we do, are meaningful displays of the city's mission to cultivate an enduring and remarkable community where people want to be. All right. So the next three slides will be our three work group initiatives. And each of these initiatives has its own slide, with Justees, as you can see here, being the first of these three. So these work group initiatives are intended to really be the bulk of our work this year. Our commissioners have each committed to one or two of these work groups. And although some of the time at our monthly meetings is dedicated to work on these initiatives, the majority of the, the work is being done outside of the meetings. The Justees work group is the first of these three. And you can see our goals listed here. I just want to kind of highlight a few of these. As I mentioned before, we've been working on the Justees Initiative since 2021, with much of our early work focused on the campaign to discharge and to help residents discharge racial restrictive covenants on Bloomington properties. Our work this year is going to focus a little bit more on the legacy of those covenants and promoting policies and procedures, practices that can help create more equitable housing and homeownership opportunities. Our second work group initiative is housing. And although this is in a similar vein as the Justees Initiative, our housing work group is going to focus on issues of homelessness and rental housing in Bloomington. We're in the early stages of work on this, although last year we did make some really meaningful connections with city staff, particularly city staff that are already doing a lot of this work. Our goals are to support the work that's already being done, increase awareness and resource visibility, and advance tenant rights and accessibility to rental housing in Bloomington. And our final work group is focused on promoting equity issues of our LGBTQIA residents and youth. The goals of this group include educating the committee on the conversion therapy ordinance or potential state law, promotion and recommendation of the Human Rights Campaign's Municipal Equality Index, promoting pride, and partnering with community organizations. Our two youth commissioners are both part of this work group, so we really see some exciting opportunities to be able to partner with the public schools. For example, connecting with the high schools' existing gay straight alliances. So also of our work group initiatives, our third category in our work plan was our partnerships. And this category is for initiatives that we're not necessarily spearheading, but we are providing representation on and working with. You can see our current partnerships here, but because these opportunities oftentimes come to us pretty organically throughout the year, there is definitely opportunity that this is not entirely conclusive list, but there's other opportunities that will arise throughout the year. And then through our work plan development and conversations with collaborators, the commission has had a desire to take on several projects. However, knowing that we're limited in time and capacity, we decided to narrow in on the categories I just discussed. We did, however, want to make sure we have like a fully documented list of everything that we brainstormed during our work plan sessions. So we have a list of these potential opportunities if time allows, if opportunities arise, and as we think about developing work plans in the future, we just have this to go back to. So that concludes my overview of our annual report and our work plan. I want to thank you again for having me here tonight. And at this point, I'd be really happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Chair Bosu. Thanks for the presentation. Greatly appreciated. Council questions, comments? Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you for your presentation and for your, your work over these number of years with the commission. I wanted to just thank you for the appendix. I, I see the whole thing. So I, I knew I was going to ask that question, but I don't even have to ask. It's right there with the, the Human Rights Campaign score of eighty-four. And I think I'll, I'll give you a call at some point because I'd like to dig into that a little bit more.
Right.
As to-
Of course. Yep.
Get that a little higher.
Mayor, if I could, and Councilmember Lohman, thank you for that question or just for that comment. I do know that that will be a focus of our, one of our work groups, our LGBTQIA plus, is to really take a look at that municipal equality index and take a look at where we could make some recommendations to the city that we could see some improvement in the scores. But also just make sure that as we're taking a look at that, that those improvements are making like really clear impacts on people's lives.
Mr. Verbrugge, a comment?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and council members, Councilmember Lohman, on that point specifically, I do want to give credit to the Human Rights Commission and to our staff. I think when I started here back in 2015, the city's score on that index was in the neighborhood of like twenty-four, twenty-five. So in a relatively short period of time that, that we have moved that high up the index, I think is credit to the work that you've done. Thank you.
Thank you for that work. I remember being at a conference and someone sharing the score with me and I was shocked. So I am really happy to see, although I'd love to see it higher, you know, I mean-
Of course.
Maybe I'd love to see that much higher. I won't even mention it because I, I want to see that higher, so.
Council, additional questions, comments? Well, very good. As I said, thank you so very much. Thank you for your work. And if you could please share that with the rest of the commissioners. We don't get enough FaceTime. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Carter waving your hand from, from the remote location. Councilmember Carter, I apologize.
Thanks, Mayor. Sorry, I was a little delayed on that, too. I guess I just had a quick question on your potential future opportunities slide. You talked about working maybe more closely with the Office of Racial Equity and Inclusion and Belonging. I always get it wrong, OREB. And so I guess I'm just curious if you can talk a little bit more about that relationship because from my perspective on council, there's a lot of overlap between the work of the two bodies. Obviously, one is just more of an externally facing volunteer commission. One is internal staff, kind of doing, obviously working on work plans full time. And I'm just wondering, what does that look like for that work to be done in alignment? And, and my understanding is that in the past, CoEd has been the staff lead on the Human Rights Commission. Does that still make sense? And there's, since there's so much overlap between OREB and HRC. So I guess if, I don't know, Molly, if it's you or if it's Jamie, if somebody could speak to that a little bit, I think that that would be really helpful.
Chair Bosu?
I can start. Yeah. Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you, Councilmember Carter, for that question. So in the past, we, we have collaborated with the Office of Racial Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging. An example of that would be, I would say, just over a year ago, we invited Faith Jackson to one of our commission meetings. And we were really looking for, as we were developing our work plan that current year, what kind of direction we could get from the Office of Racial Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging. And that would really align some of our work plan goals with that office. And that was a really productive meeting. Faith came to the table with a lot of suggestions and a lot of ways. And I think if we were to take a look at that list today and align it with our work plan, there's a lot of ways in which I think you would see our, the work of, of that organization reflected in our work plan. That being said, I think there's definitely a desire by the Human Rights Commission to have a closer relationship with the Office of Racial Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging. And I think that is definitely a growth opportunity for both of us. And so in the future, I think we will be looking for that, that closer collaboration. And I think that will just make both of our organizations better. Like, I think that's-
Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Councilmember Carter, Community Services Director Kirby couldn't be here with us this evening. It's the, the HRC is managed through her team. She did meet with the HRC last week, talked about some expectations moving forward for how they can work together, especially on, on some of the proclamations and that process. But she also wanted to make a point that, you know, since we are in this transition period with the, with the CoEd manager being vacant right now, that it is going to be one of the priorities for the new CoEd manager to work with the HRC and the office to clarify what those roles and relationships are. So that's a, that's a discussion that's happening among staff currently.
Thank you.
Council, if there's nothing else, I would look for a motion to approve the Human Rights Commission's 2023 work plan as presented. So moved? And a motion by Councilmember Martin, second by Councilmember Delisandro, to approve the Human Rights Commission 2023 work plan. No further council discussion on this. Mr. Brillert? Carter?
Aye.
Moa?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Delisandro?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie? Aye. Motion carries seven zero. So again, thank you. And pass our thanks on to the, to the entire commission.
Of course. Thank you so much.
Outstanding work and looking forward to what you've got coming in 2023. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thanks. You, too. Item three on our agenda is our consent agenda. Councilmember Delisandro has our consent business for this evening. Councilmember Delisandro?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Only one hold tonight, 3.18, unless Councilmember Carter has a hold. I didn't hear from you, but nope. Okay, great. So if, if there aren't any others, well, holding one, 3.18, I will move to approve tonight's consent agenda, 3.1 through 3.17.
Motion by Councilmember Delisandro, second by Councilmember Lohman, to accept tonight's consent business as stated. No further council discussion on this. Mr. Brillert? Carter?
Aye.
Moa?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Delisandro?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie? Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Item 3.18.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was held by Councilmember Lohman. I will turn it over to him.
Lohman?
Thank you, Mayor. All I want to do is abstain on this one. I've abstained on the, the previous one. I think it's just appropriate for the same reasons to go ahead and abstain on this. It's just for the collective bargaining agreement with ASME, Council Five Local 2828 Assistant City Attorney's Unit. So somebody else wanted to move it. I will go ahead and abstain of that.
That, that's fine. Thank, thank you, Mr., or Councilmember Lohman. I did have one question about it anyway. Since it was going to be held, I figured I'd go ahead and throw my question out, if that's fair. And I don't know if-
Delisandro?
Verbrug- Verb- I can't talk tonight. Sorry. Mr. Verbrugge, do you, you may or may not know the answer to this question, but I know this was on our agenda not that long ago. And I'm, I thought, I thought, you know, to Councilmember Lohman's point, we had approved it. Can you provide a very high-level understanding of what the changes were? Were they mostly administrative? Or what was the, what was the issue there?
Mr. Mayor and council members, Councilmember Delisandro, this was an item where there was agreement and it, we neglected to get it into the agreement. When it was completed, this has happened in the past with other units. And so when we've done that previously, we've, the parties have sat down and agreed to an MOU, a memorandum of understanding until the next round of negotiations, just so it's documented. And it was the preference of ASME that they reopen the agreement and have the council ratify it again rather than do an MOU.
Helpful. Thank you. And as a follow-up, then, this is, this is, I, I believe that they're going to go through collective bargaining again in the, the near term, meaning maybe towards the end of this year. But this is the last expected change for this agreement? Okay. And, and so that means payroll and everything gets sorted right away. Yeah. Okay. Fantastic. Thank you. With that, then, I will move to authorize the appropriate officials to execute the amended 2022-23 labor agreement with ASME Council Five for the Assistant City Attorney Unit.
Motion by Councilmember Delisandro, second by Councilmember Mar- Councilmember Martin, to accept item 3.18 on tonight's consent agenda. No further council discussion on this. Mr. Brillert? Carter?
Aye.
Moa?
Aye.
Lohman?
Abstain.
Nelson?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Delisandro?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie? Aye. Motion carries six zero with Councilmember Lohman abstaining on this vote. Thank you, Councilmember Delisandro. Moving on to our hearings and resolutions and ordinances. Item four on our agenda this evening. And our first hearing is a public hearing on the DEVCO host approval. This is item 4.1 on our agenda. Ms. Economy Scholler here, is here with us this evening to explain what DEVCO host approval means, for everyone who might be wondering.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Host approval, under federal tax rules and regulations, when another city is issuing tax-exempt bonds, so that it makes it cost-effective for the project, a 501(c)(3) or a nonprofit agency is what DEVCO is. And what they would do with this is we would approve the issuance of using the bonds issued by the city of Minnetoka to spend some of those proceeds in Bloomington. The host approval is they're spending some of that money here. And that is what the council would authorize approval of if so chooses tonight. So this project, there's 50 townhomes in the city of Bloomington in this area here that would have, get refurbished, updated, cleaned out. And it still would remain rental units, Section 8 housing is what it currently is right now. And it would still remain affordable housing. So this evening is a public hearing to allow for the host approval.
Very good. Council, questions of Ms. Economy Scholler? Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. So just a couple of quick questions. So Minnetoka is the one that's actually issuing the bonds, not Bloomington. And we're just allowing the expenditure within Bloomington, correct?
Mayor and Councilmember Nelson, that is correct.
Okay.
And if you, Juliette Inten, our bond attorney, is also here. She's handling the activities of the bond exchange. So if there's a question I can't answer, Julie should probably answer that one next.
Then can you clarify what the expenditures can be spent for? Because the only item that I had a concern about was the acquisition. I thought in our packet, it said something about the purchase of property. But this sounds like it's for the rehabilitation of it. And so if I could get some clarity on what the funds will be used for and what they could be used for.
Ms. Eddington, good evening. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmember Nelson. The DEVCO people are buying two properties. One is the Blooming Glen in Bloomington, and there is another similar facility in Minnetoka. So they're buying the property, and then they're going to rehab the property, and then they'll be, both will have affordable components. So it is acceptable to use, these are housing deals, so we needed to go to Minnesota Management and Budget to get housing allocation for these affordable projects. And it was easier for DEVCO to put these together to be more efficient with the funds. And then half the money is going to be used in Bloomington, half the money is going to be used in Minnetoka. And then each of those will have 30 years of affordability for each project.
Mayor, follow-up question there. What level of affordability? It's, it's 50 units. What level of affordability are these at?
That I am not sure of. I know that there is Section 8.
Yep. Mayor and Council, per the information that we received later this afternoon is that would extend the 30-year term at a 60% AMI. Currently, the tenants in the, as are Section 8, would pay 30% of their income, and the Housing Assistant Program contract pays the other two-thirds.
Last question, Mayor. There, there are no costs to the city of Bloomington on this. Is that accurate?
That is correct. The DEVCO people will pay for your fee for host approval, and then- The DEVCO people will pay for your fee for host approval, and then they will pay Minnetoka for any of their costs as well, and they'll pay for the bond attorney as well, which is me.
Okay.
To be clear.
That was the most important part.
I wanted, to be clear, that I do represent Minnetoka and Bloomington. But they have agreed, you know, in theory that we could do this.
Great. Thank you.
And Ms. Economy Scholler, the city of Bloomington has done this type of arrangement in the past a number of times, correct?
Mayor and Council, we average about one a year.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, additional questions? All right. This is a public hearing, and I will open the public hearing on item 4.1 right now, the public hearing regarding the DEVCO host approval. Anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak to item 4.1 this evening? Mr. Sable, do we have anyone on the phone?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, we do not.
No one on the phone? Last call for anybody in the council chambers? Counsel, no one on the phone, no one in the council chambers coming forward. I would look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.1.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Loman, second by Councilmember Dalisandro to close the public hearing on item 4.1. No further council discussion on this. Mr. Brillert.
Carter?
Aye.
Mua?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Dalisandro?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero, closing the public hearing. Counsel, any further questions, comments on this? If not, I would look for action. Councilmember Loman.
Mayor, I move to approve a resolution granting host city approval to the issuance of the bonds by the city of Minnetoka, Minnesota.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Loman, second by Councilmember Nelson to approve the resolution granting host city approval to the issuance of the bonds by Minnetoka. No further council discussion on this. Mr. Brillert.
Carter?
Aye.
Mua?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Dalisandro?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much. Moving on to item 4.2, our next public hearing of the evening. Mr. Junker approaching because this is a new on-sale intoxicating liquor license application for, I'm sorry, pronounce it for me again.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I'm no expert at this either.
I'm trying to show off my Portuguese chops, and I think it's Fogo Gaúcho.
Fogo Gaúcho, that's what we're going with.
Exactly.
Okay. Mr. Junker, good evening.
So, yes, tonight, new liquor license for what he said, Fogo Gaúcho. It's the restaurant on the end of the Best Western, right over off Killabrew in 77 there. So it's a, it's a, it's still the Brazilian steakhouse, but with some more family fare, so it's not full-blown. I was talking to the, to one of the representatives, I was kind of curious if they were going to go full steakhouse. They had to have something for the hotel, so. And I'll just tease that it might be another one coming, so we'll see. So this one's kind of a, you know, Brazilian steakhouse light, if you will. But everything's checked out. He has some other restaurants, so this is an easy one for us. And they're ready to go. They're waiting for tonight. So once we get this, we got to get this filed with the state, but they're ready to open, so.
Very good. Good. Glad to hear that. Counsel, any questions of Mr. Junker? No questions of Mr. Junker? I will open this. Public hearing on item 4.2 this evening. This is a new on-sale intoxicating liquor license application for Fogo Gaúcho. Anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak on item 4.2 this evening? Mr. Sable, anyone on the phone?
Mr. Mayor, no one on the phone.
Last call for the council chambers? No one coming forward? Counsel, no one in the chambers coming forward, no one on the phone. I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.2.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Martin, second by Councilmember Mua to close the public hearing on item 4.2. No further council discussion on this. Mr. Brillert.
Carter?
Aye.
Mua?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Dalisandro?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Counsel, unless there are questions or comments, I'd look for action on item 4.2.
Mayor, I can make that motion?
Councilmember Martin?
Mayor, I move that we approve the on-sale intoxicating liquor license for Salty Steak Churascaria LLC, doing business as Fogo Gaúcho.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Martin, second by Councilmember Mua to approve the on-sale intoxicating liquor license for the LLC doing business as Fogo Gaúcho. No further council discussion on this. Mr. Brillert.
Carter?
Aye.
Mua?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Dalisandro?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Mr. Junker. He's gone already. Thank you very much, Mr. Junker. Item 4.3 is our next public hearing of the evening, and this is a public hearing regarding the Board of Review Eligibility Ordinance Amendment. And we have with us this evening our new city assessor, Mr. Tim Bolger. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. So the ask is to amend the Board of Review eligibility language that surrounds two members being qualified commercial, industrial, or apartment experience-wise, and we'd like to change that number to one. So if I could get the next slide. So first, I just wanted to recap what the board does, and specifically what it does here in Bloomington. So here we have a special board that's appointed by you. It's made up of five Bloomington residents that have experience in real estate. Currently, the makeup is three residential experience and two with commercial, industrial, or apartment experience. Now, they hear appeals that we, in general, can't resolve informally ahead of the meeting, and typically, they are residential in nature. So the job of the board is to make decisions on classification or value concerns. So it's important to note that any decision the board makes will shift tax burden onto other property owners if there's a decrease in valuation. It's also important to note that the Department of Revenue recommends that if a member of the board or any members of the board are not qualified to make a decision on a property, that they vote no change and have the property owner proceed to county board if that's what they decide to do. Next slide, please. So this is a five-year look back. Historically, 51 total appeals have been heard since 2018. Fifty-one of them total, only two commercial, industrial, apartment-related. The rest were residential. And these are appeals that the board heard and had to make a ruling on. Some of these appeals, we wrap up ahead of the meeting. So I decided earlier, because of a question I received, to look back over the past 20 years. And in looking at that, about 9% of our total appeals over the course of 20 years have been commercial, industrial, or apartment-related, with the other 91% being residential in nature. Just to put this in perspective, we receive about 100 tax petitions a year, and about one or two of them are residential, the remainder are commercial, industrial, apartment. That's truly the venue where the taxpayer will get the most thorough analysis and best opportunity to get a fair shake at their appeal. So in general, tax court appeal will exchange in an appraisal. It'll take many, many hours to put that together. They'll testify in courts. The trial will take at a minimum of a day. And our local Board of Appeals, the appellant gets five to 10 minutes to speak, we get five to 10 minutes to speak as well. So it's really not doing the appeal the service it requires. Now, we are mandated to accept these appeals, and we're happy to do so. Can I get the next slide, please? So again, the ask is to amend the language you see here on the screen that's highlighted. Our current makeup is above and beyond the statutory requirement of Statute 274.01 subdivision two, which is the statute that allows this board to appoint a special board. So amending this to one member from two would still retain the commercial, industrial experience on the board that we currently have, but better serve our residential appeals. As I mentioned, over the past 20 years, 90% of our appeals have been residential in nature, where 60% of our board makeup has been residential. So to circle back on what I said earlier about the Department of Revenue's recommendation, realistically, the three residential people on our board are either appraisers, realtors, and they don't have the skills necessary to value an office tower, a car dealership, something of that nature. So they're pretty much deferring their judgment to whoever is on the board, commercial, industrial. The appellant really isn't getting five opinions of value, they're getting one, and then the board members have to decide if they want to go along with that. So again, we ask, because this is a very important process, and because it impacts tax, both of the appellant and the rest of the tax base, that we make this amendment to allow our residential appeals to get a better review than currently stated. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Bolger. Counsel, questions? Councilmember Dalisandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So on an aggregate basis, I think I understand the logic here. It's the majority of the work that you do, maps. I guess the scenario I would, and maybe this is what you meant when you said what you did about it kind of moving to the court to begin with. If we only have one commercial appraiser on the review board, and somebody does ask for appeal at this court or this board, does that one person, are we over-representing, I guess, or are we creating a point of failure, if you will, to have only one opinion as opposed to two opinions in that particular scenario? Especially if you mention that four others would probably default, you know, to that person's opinion. Does it make it kind of a, for lack of a better way, I don't know a better analogy, but like, is it a king-for-a-day kind of a concept there, you know? Or is the scenario largely going to be, most people won't use that opinion anyway, they'll go right to tax court to get their remedy, and therefore, you know, it doesn't really matter? I just want to kind of understand if I'm reading what you're saying correctly there.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Dalisandro, typically, a savvy or knowledgeable property owner will engage a tax representative or a lawyer and go directly to tax court. The appeals we generally hear are those that just want to defer their right to go to county board and have it presented there. Or it might be an owner-occupied property, and this is their first time through the appeal process. So really, you know, we do our best to explain the process. We fielded, you know, last year, we fielded 800 appeal calls, probably 100 of those were commercial, industrial, and apartment. And we resolved all but, I believe, one of them informally ahead of that date. And those that we didn't resolve, they go directly to tax court in general. I think just the sheer volume of residential appeals, we'd be doing a better service to those appellant's because if you're a commercial broker, you may not have seen the residential market, done anything in the residential market in the past year or two. You might not understand the dynamics here in Bloomington, where the realtors and appraisers on our board, they're in it day-to-day, every day, seeing listings, doing tours, and so forth. Hope that answers the question? Okay.
And a good question, councilmember. I think that's, it's a good legitimate question. I think your point is well-made, but I think your point ahead of time, I think, was especially well-made, that the logic behind this seems to stand as, yeah. Counsel, any additional questions? I see no questions, so I will open up this public hearing on item 4.3. This is a public hearing regarding an ordinance amendment regarding Bloomington's Board of Review eligibility requirements. Anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak to item 4.3 this evening? No one coming forward? Mr. Sable, anyone on the phone?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, no one on the phone.
Last call for anyone in the chambers? No one in the chambers coming forward, counsel? No one on the phone? I'd look for a motion to close item 4.3, the public hearing on item 4.3.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Loman, second by Councilmember Martin to close our public hearing on item 4.3 this evening. No further council discussion on this. Mr. Brillert.
Carter?
Aye.
Mua?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Dalisandro?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero, closing the public hearing on item 4.3. Counsel, unless there are questions or comments, I would look for action here. Councilmember Loman.
So just really one question. Certainly, I asked the questions earlier. If we were to go down to zero, and I'm not saying that today, but if we were to go down to zero and just find a different way to handle the commercial, theoretically, we would have five people that would be able to handle that really high volume of transactions that kind of take place there. Is that what other cities do?
So, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Loman, in my previous experience at Scott County, we had a county board of appeal and equalization, which is very similar. And our special board was all local residential realtors and appraisers. Working at the city of Minnetoka as well, we had a residential special board appointed. In general, they'll vote no change, pass it along to the county board, who's better equipped to handle these type of appeals.
So on those, the county boards, they probably have more commercial, bigger population of folks that'd be able to handle that.
Most definitely at Hennepin County. They see a wide range of appeals, and they have many, many properties to deal with, so.
You know, I'm not saying that for today, but I wonder if we ought not look at that going forward? I just, I just think with one on there, we're going to see a lot of deferments, as Councilman Dalisandro has mentioned. And I just wonder if we could provide a better experience for our residential properties and also for our commercials when they're getting ready to do that. I just feel like that's a better way to go, but I don't want to drag us down tonight to necessarily do that. But I'd love to see that come out at some point.
Councilmember Loman? Counsel, any additional comments, questions? Councilmember Loman?
And Mayor, I'd be happy to make that motion, then, to move to adopt a motion modifying the eligibility requirements of the Board of Review, thereby amending Chapter 2 of the city code.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Loman, second by Councilmember Nelson to adopt the ordinance modifying eligibility requirements for our Board of Review, amending Chapter 2 of Bloomington City Code. No further council discussion on this. Mr. Brillert.
Carter?
Aye.
Mua?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Dalisandro?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. And item 4.4 is somewhat related, I guess. An appointment to the Bloomington Board of Review. We have one opening. Mr. Bolger.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Lee Kruger has offered to step up and serve on this board. You may know him from his past work as the St. Paul Port Authority President for the past six years here, and prior to that, he was a senior vice president of the Port Authority. past six years here, and prior to that, he was a senior vice president of the Port Authority. Prior to that, he worked decades in commercial leasing, whether it be malls, strip centers, retail. General, he's, he's a very well experienced commercial, commercial real estate professional. And I know we just talked about how it's tough to find commercial real estate professionals, but I'd like to also mention that we do have, our last commercial real estate person on the board, Clay Dodd, had stepped down and he did a favor to our, our prior city assessor to stay on the board one additional year to fill that requirement we had. So we're, we're happy to find such a qualified replacement and we will be losing our other commercial qualified board member next year as Brad Moore steps down, so.
Thank you. Just a question, we just went through an appointment process for a number of boards and commissions, and just curious, the, the steps, the, the process that was put in place to appoint Mr. Kruger this evening?
Yeah, so I can speak briefly on that. Our, our board's a little different. People are, they're, they're offering their time and, and real estate expertise and that we only meet once, maybe twice a year, depending if we need to reconvene. So, you know, we kind of extend the invitation out to our network of, of the qualified people that are Bloomington residents, and as far as commercial experience goes, there's not a lot of brokers, appraisers, property managers out there that, that have, have given us the idea that they'd be willing to do so. So we've had the conversations, we also have board applications open through the site. We've received one application this year as well through that method, but unfortunately, that was a residential realtor.
Well, thank you for that clarification. I was just, I think it's good to fill in the blanks there because we did just do a, a pretty lengthy and extensive appointment process, so I'm glad we could clarify that. And I will say, council, if you haven't had the opportunity, if you don't know Lee, he's absolutely fantastic. Did great work in the St. Paul Port Authority for a number of years. Bloomington resident and just a really solid guy, so I, I think he, he'll be a great addition, I think, to our, to our board here. Councilmember De La Sondro?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Just, just to clarify, I think I heard this correctly, he is stepping into the role, he isn't, in your losing, you're going to replace the person that's stepping down next year with the residential qualified person that we just said was okay to do, is that, do I have that right?
Mr. Mayor, councilmember De La Sondro, I may have been a bit convoluted in my speaking. He will be replacing Clay Dodd, who was a commercial qualified member of this board. He'll be taking over the remainder of his term. And then next year, I, I added the additional information that we do have our other commercial qualified member that will be stepping down, so we'll be down to one at this point next year.
Okay, and then, and then you intend to replace that person with a residential person per our earlier vote?
After this meeting, yes, correct.
Yeah, wonderful, thank you, appreciate it.
Council, any further questions here? Any further discussion? If not, council, I'd look for action on item 4.4.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember De La Sondro?
Yeah, absolutely. I move to appoint Lee Kruger to the Bloomington Board of Review for a term ending July 1st, 2024.
Second?
Motion by councilmember De La Sondro, second by councilmember Loman, to appoint Lee Kruger to the Bloomington Board of Review. No further council discussion on this. Mr. Brillert?
Carter?
Aye.
Moa?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
De La Sondro?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much, Mr. Bulger, and say hello to Mr. Kruger when you see him and, and welcome him aboard. Great, thank you. Our final public hearing of the evening is item 4.5. It's a public hearing regarding the Minnesota Investment Fund and Job Creation Fund Application Resolution for Polar Semiconductor LLC. And council, given my association with a marketplace competitor of Polar Semiconductor, I am going to step down from the dais here and remove myself from the council chambers and metaphorically hand the gavel to councilmember Nelson to run this public hearing. So, councilmember Nelson, it's all yours.
I was expecting music. Don't mess up anything. What does this do?
All right. Thank you, Mayor, and so I will call item 4.5. Thank you for being here. Give us an introduction to what, what we got to decide tonight.
All right. Thank you, interim acting mayor, acting mayor Nelson, councilmembers. I am Jason Schmidt, I'm the Assistant Port Authority Administrator, and tonight before you is a public hearing for the Minnesota Investment Fund and the Job Creation Fund Application Resolution for Polar Semiconductor. Next slide, please. So just a quick overview so everyone is familiar, so Polar is a semiconductor facility manufacturing plant over in our eastern part of the city, located at 2800 East Old Shakopee Road. Next slide, please. And they are looking, and they are looking to go ahead and apply for the Minnesota Investment Fund as well as the Job Creation Fund, which are two state programs administered through the, through DED, the Department of Employment and Economic Employment Department. What the city of Bloomington will be doing is acting as a pass through. And so we are applying on behalf of them, behalf of Polar, to apply directly for the state funds. If they are awarded, we would then act as a pass through. We would do all of the administrative work of reviewing the, the paperwork, the reporting that needs to be required to the state, who would be acting as the middle person for that. So it's really the administration of these programs. And so the Minnesota Investment Fund, back to the slide, please, sorry, just quickly, is a loan program and it's available to businesses that are engaged in manufacturing, warehousing, distribution, technology-related industries. So it's open to almost any business within the state of Minnesota that meets the guidelines of this program. It is designed to generate new income and wealth, so it's really to try to, to make sure that we're keeping manufacturing jobs here within the state of Minnesota, as well as looking to expand the job force here as well. The Job Creation Fund is another fund that Polar will be applying for as well, and this one is, it provides state financial incentives to new and expanding businesses that meet certain job criteria standards, and those are laid out in the agreements as if they are awarded those funding mechanisms. The size of the award depends on a variety of factors, including but not limited to our competitiveness within the market, as well as local economic conditions, job creation and wage levels, as well as the funding within the program, because this is administered statewide, and so there's only so many dollars to go around to all the businesses applying. All expenditures and hiring related to the MIF and the JCF assistance may not occur until the funding has formally been approved by the applicants, or excuse me, by DED. Next slide, please. So where is Polar looking to utilize these funds? So Polar Semiconductor, they are located in almost 300,000 square foot building on the east side of the city. They have what's known as three fabrication facilities, also known as fabs, including the addition that was created Fab 3 in 2012. And so they will be looking to build out that facility as well as within the other portions of Polar. Their request tonight is to adopt that resolution to authorize staff to move forward in the submission of these applications, working with Polar, and then submitting those to DED. And then if they are awarded by DED, if the, the resolution does authorize city staff and the mayor to go ahead and sign those agreements to make sure that we are meeting all of the conditions. The required business credit check has been completed, and so we did have our municipal advisor, Baker Tilly, reveal all of the financials, and it came back a clean record regarding their legal and financial activity. They have enough assets to move forward with the, the loan they're requesting. In addition, the MIF, application does require collateral, because it is a loan, and so their collateral could be the equipment being financed, a line of credit, or other possible options with which DED deems accessible. Next slide, please. So as I stated, tonight, we're just at the application point. We're looking to submit the application to DED. If Polar and the city is awarded, at that time, we would move forward with the authorization of the agreements, and this resolution will, would allow us to do that administratively. Once those parameters are set, we would then come back before this board again for another public hearing for our business subsidy. And so we do have a business subsidy policy, which we need to make sure that we are following, and at that time, we would bring that item before this board for consideration. The DED funding with which they are asking is up to $4.4 million, and like I stated, that's to hopefully retain and attract new jobs. Within Polar's application, they are proposing to create at least 73 new jobs within the first two years. And a portion of this loan, they are looking to, to be forgivable, a forgivable loan, if they meet the certain parameters which would be spelled out within those agreements. Next slide, please. And tonight before you, on the screen is the motion that staff is recommending to allow us to move forward with applying for the, the two applications, as well as for the mayor and city manager to execute those agreements. And you would do that after the public hearing, because this, the MIF, the Manufacturing Investment Fund does require a public hearing for, for us in order to apply. And so that's why there is a public hearing tonight. And so with that, I am available for any questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Schmidt, appreciate the information on this. Any questions? Yeah, councilmember De La Sondro?
Thank you, acting mayor. I never said that to you before, it's very exciting.
No one has.
Is that right? First time for you.
You're the first.
Good for you. Thank you for this. Super excited to see this coming up. I'm really excited about the CHIPS Act in general and, and everything. It didn't sound like it, but I just want to confirm, there's no, we're an administrative pass through, no, no liability on our side as a city for, for this, meaning we don't have a requirement to help repay the loan or anything like that if it were to default or anything to that extent, is that right?
Acting mayor, councilmember De La Sondro, sorry about that, you are correct. That's where the collateral comes in, so, so DED will work that out with regards to the application and the agreements and stuff, and the city is basically, like you stated, just a pass through, and we confirm all of the invoices and receipts that this, the activities that are occurring within the building are met, as well as all of the jobs being created, those will be verified, and then the funds would be released to Polar.
Just a real quick follow-up, if I may, sir. Okay, and then is there any administrative fee to us for taking this on, or is it not necessary because it's a minimal thing or whatever? Thanks.
Acting mayor and councilmember De La Sondro, correct. It's, it's, it's kind of, it's our incentive to the business to do this, is the city's, is we take this on as part of our administrative role and our department's philosophy of moving forward with economic development in the city.
Okay, so it's our contribution, if you will, to the economic development plan around all of this?
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you, I'm done.
Okay, great. Any other questions? Councilmember Loman?
Now that we've gotten the risk, taking care of acting mayor, you took my, I was going to ask, I, I just wanted to say that just these two programs seem to be a significant opportunity for the city. And I, you know, if we were to pass this, this evening, it'd be interesting to see how this develops and what this looks like for the future. If we're eligible for this, does this, you know, you know, start a trend or, or help us to attract more, more of these things? I'm just kind of curious about that.
Acting mayor, councilmember Loman, we have utilized the Manufacturing Investment Fund as well as Job Creation Fund for a number of projects here within the last couple of years. One of them, the late, last one was SIC. We did do that program back in 2021, I believe, is when that was passed. Additionally, we also did an Italian corporation, PAM, they came across, and we did a Job Creations Fund for them. They just had an internal build out, so there was no zoning entitlements or anything that came before this board, so that was just an entire build out. They moved their facility over here for a North American manufacturing plant. And so the funds are available and we, we continue to work with a number of businesses here, and it is our thought that we probably will be seeing maybe a potential, a few more of the CHIPS manufacturers here in the city apply because of the federal CHIPS Act. And we are learning more each day as the federal program is laid out and kind of those terms and the process for which they can apply for those fundings.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, acting mayor. I just wanted to say that, so. So just a quick question, I think you mentioned the number of jobs, could you remind me? And then I'm just curious, just kind of what the, if, if they've given an average salary range of what these new positions would be, the new jobs created? If I recall correctly, when we were having conversations around SIC, that was articulated to us, and so I guess I'm just curious if you have that information.
Acting mayor and councilmember Carter, the number of jobs projected to be created is right around 73 new positions, which, with which is within the application. As far as the salaries, I do not have them offhand. However, there are representatives from Polar here tonight, if they wish to come up and, and answer that question, they may. What I can tell you is they are above livable wage jobs.
Okay, good, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Martin?
Thank you very much, Mayor, in, in an acting capacity. There you go. Just to, to make sure I've, I've got things straight here. So with the MIF and JCF, is that being pursued on a parallel track with the application for the CHIPS funding, or is the CHIPS funding being passed through these two programs to Polar? If that makes sense?
Acting mayor and councilmember Martin, so, so this is almost, this is like a separate path. So first, they, Polar is applying for these two programs for the assistance, and what we know so far about the federal CHIPS Act is that they are looking to leverage the dollars coming from the federal government with a local match, being state or local contributions. And so this would be kind of leveraging the state dollars if Polar was awarded those funding.
Okay, yeah, just recent articles have talked about kind of the strings that come from the Commerce Department with the CHIPS funding, so I was curious. Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Good, thank you. Councilmember Loman?
Thank you, acting mayor. So I just want to confirm, this is available to any other chip company within Bloomington? And it's really just limited by the amount of funding that's in the, the current, the pool for, for that? So there's, there's no like competitive advantage by us providing this or submitting this application on their behalf? Anyone could come and as long as there's money in there and they get approved, they could utilize that?
Acting mayor, councilmember Moa? That is correct.
Great. Not seeing any other questions, this is a public hearing, so I would open it up to the public. Do we have anyone wishing to speak? Does anyone from Polar want to say anything? No? Okay, fair enough. Mr. Sable, do we have anyone on the phone?
Acting mayor and councilmembers, no one on the phone.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. So moved.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to close the public hearing.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Moa?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
De La Sondro?
Aye.
Acting mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero. I got it all done, thank you. So then, any other discussion of the council? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion for the resolution.
Happy to make that, you want to do it?
No, you got it, you got it.
Sure? Okay, great, happy to make the motion. I move to adopt a resolution regarding the authorization and approval for a Minnesota Investment Fund and Job Creation Fund Application Grant Agreement and Forgivable Loan in Connection with Polar Semiconductor.
Second? You don't have to do what he says. Just for the record. So we've got a motion by De La Sondro, second by Moa, to adopt a resolution regarding the authorization and approval of MIF and JCF Fund Application Grant Agreement Forgivable Loan in Connection with Polar Semiconductor. Any, no, not seeing any discussion, I would ask that we call the vote.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember Moa?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
De La Sondro?
Aye.
Acting mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Passes six zero. Yeah. I apologize if I remembered, I would have done my hair and dressed better, but.
Mr. Acting mayor, it's not very often somebody is relieved for doing their duty.
I answered all your, you know.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Nelson. Forget where we are here. Moving on to item five, our organizational business, and item 5.1, a discussion on our license code and some proposed updates to kind of streamline things and make it a little bit, little bit easier for folks. Mr. Junker?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and council, some of you may remember, back in October, November, I kind of teased this a little bit. You were bugging me about coming back with all these massage all the time, so, so yeah, these are some things that we've been kind of looking at and just kind of bugging us for years that we could probably do a little bit better, and I can't tell you why these got written that way, but maybe we can fix it tonight. So we're trying to make things a little bit more efficient, not just for us, but for the applicants, trying to make our fees, you'll see in a bit, a little bit cleaner, and then just match our code to some of these new modern times. So right out of the gate, the liquor licenses, as you know, is probably, you see me the most. They are, they are a big deal, they do need to have your approval to go to the state, but they don't have to be a public hearing, and, and, and not every city does that. So in my, my little clerk email group, sent that out to them, and about 14 responded, and you see the numbers there that, you know, four of them kind of do it the, the way we do it, but six only do the new ones as public, the rest they do as consent, and there's actually four cities that do everything on consent. So, all, all your take on that? The, as we've experienced in the past, we've had those temporary licenses pop up, they don't think that far ahead, they, they want to do this event, then they ask me and it's too late. When I say too late, just to, maybe you're aware of this or not, but the ad has to be 10 days before this hearing. I have to have that to the newspaper another week before that, that's three weeks lost. So whenever I tell people how, how long it takes, you got to work your way backwards, that three week's just gone. So if we could go into the consent item, I wouldn't have to do that. So those temporary, those, those event ones, quick and easy, and even tonight's, forgot, the new restaurant. The, they were ready for us, and they were all local. I knew it was going to be a quickie, but those three weeks got us to tonight. I could have had this to you maybe a couple, three weeks earlier, one of the previous ones. So I never like when they're waiting on us, and tonight was one of those nights. So, nothing's going to change as far as how we process liquor, it's just, could we get it off of the public hearing and move it to consent, is what we're asking. Massage, the last few have been licensed with us and they're moving, and just because they're moving, that is a new license, that's not going to change. We still want to look at that space and make sure it meets all our requirements, but why are we coming to council? Why are we, why are we advertising that? I have no history of why that's that way, but we didn't do that with body art, and there are not a lot, not a lot of differences there in how we handle them. So body art is all staff, and massage could be the same, or we can just move it to consent, so looking for your guidance on that. Do you want to be approving the massage? Do you want it still on consent, or do you... Do you want to be approving the massage? Do you want it still on consent or do you want to just let us handle it as a staff? Again, the cost in these things too, I mean about fifty bucks for a normal hearing. Those renewals, remember, that's a big, huge ad and that's cost about three fifty to four hundred dollars for that ad every year too. So there's some cost savings in those. Here's where we get into some fun fee, fun fee structures. Amusement device and laundromats for some reason are on this like per machine and there's a minimum and a maximum and all this other weird math. When I ask you to go into an arcade and count machines, are you counting coin slots? Are you counting just the big machine? I think we all like that motorcycle racing one. There's four of them. Is that four machines or is it one big machine? You can understand the confusion I get into when I go in and make my account and they're countering the count and or if a machine comes and goes, am I chasing after three bucks for that machine? What we're really looking at in amusement devices, gambling devices, and we've caught a couple in the past. So basically I'm just looking at a very basic fifty dollar flat fee. I'll pop out there once a year when they first open, maybe once every year or two, just to make sure the machines are all legit. That's all we're really looking for. The laundries have always been the high fee and that fee covers our costs. It is a, environmental health does spend some time in our laundromats. And this three hundred and fifty dollar fee is spot on and that's what they're all paying now anyways. So this whole high-low and all these other games we play, never, I'd love to know how that got written, but we're just looking to flat fee that. So those are the easy ones. Now I got one freedom all over. So taxi cabs. When I first started here, it was a big business for us. We were doing about twelve to fifteen companies, three hundred or so cabbies. And during the RNC, that peaked to like five, six hundred cabbies. How we've approached cabs in the past is how we approach massage and other things. You must have a licensed company and then all the cabbies are underneath that company. That way I only have to deal with twelve or fifteen owner-operators. If I have a problem with that cabbie, I go to the manager and he helps me deal with that cabbie. Since Uber and Lyft came along, the industry has dropped, dropped, dropped to the point where we haven't had any licenses for the last five, six years. Gold Star happened to stop by the other day. He was with us for how many years? He was actually located in Bloomington for how many years? He was about a thirty to forty car garage. He's down to six. So that's the cab industry. Back to my owner-operator system where I only have to deal with so many owners and operators. Who's your driver driving for? You'll see many of these guys running an Uber Lyft Lite. You'll see the cabs, it'll say airport cab, but they'll have an Uber and a Lyft phone sitting on the dash. What am I supposed to do with that? I mean, it, the industry's really changed. Besides, our code is archaic. The meters aren't meters anymore. Everything's electronic. Everything is web-based. Everything's phone-based. That, if we continue with cabs, I got to scrap the whole thing and start over. But how this really came up, it's always been of interest to us. But back to my, my clerk email group came out a couple of months ago. Richfield was like, what's everybody doing with cabs? Crickets. And it was me and a couple others. And sure enough, cities are looking at getting rid of it. So I'm like, oh, maybe now's the time. So, so we're basically looking at just getting out of the cab industry licensing. The complaints I've always got have always, ninety-nine percent of the time has always been confusion on how cabs even work. I took a cab down to Minneapolis. It was a fifty dollar fare and on the way back it was sixty-five. Again, did it click into the meter mode? If you got picked up in Minneapolis, you're on the Minneapolis rates because Minneapolis is different than St. Paul, is different than the rest of us. So those are usually the calls we get. If it's anything criminal, it's still criminal. We're certainly going to handle that a different way. And if it's still customer service based, I still have these guys on call. The owners have always been really responsive to me, so we can still help people out. I'm not, not saying we're not going to do that, but from a licensing perspective, I just don't see, we don't really have a lot of teeth in the game right now. That was it. I like our code otherwise. So a few updates. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Junker. Councilmember Loman and then Councilmember De La Sandro. Councilmember Loman.
Thank you, Mayor. So I did have just three, three quick questions. Generally supportive of what you kind of put forward. I do wonder with the taxi regulations, as we look at Uber, Lyft and driverless cars, if it makes some sense, you know, kind of down the line to kind of do something from a policy perspective. I think you've kind of, you know, put it correctly. It's kind of a dying breed out there. And I just, you know, I've had some experiences, I've also heard of other people who've had experiences, other places where they've been, where they've had experiences, you know, taking both Uber and Lyft. And in terms of if there's any regulation that would help, you know, our residents with that, if that would be helpful. And then with the things you've put forward, how will the appeals be handled? Will that be any different with, with these changes that you're putting forward or everything just remains the same except for it's just coming to the council in a different way as a non-public hearing? And then finally, as we kind of remove the public hearing component, obviously there was a reason to put those, bring these things forward in a public hearing. And now we're kind of concentrating some of this decision-making within the staff, which is a little less transparent. But, you know, obviously we've seen over the years, nobody showing up for these things. So a good reason to kind of streamline this and move this along quicker. How will we handle conflicts of interest, you know, that staff may have, you know, with some of these companies that may come forward? Those are my three. Let me know if I need to repeat anything, but.
I got it. So to work backwards, yeah, the conflict interest, I, I'm not sure what that would be per se. Again, everything's vetted through staff already. By the time we get to you, you know, there's no real information or a big report to you. So if there's something in mind, shoot me some examples later on and we can dig into that some more. As far as any appeals of like the decisions we make. Again, that's always been in council or in code and all the licenses. If I ever deny anybody, it comes to you guys. So and back in the day, cab drivers used to push that all the time. But, oh yeah, that, that, I don't look at changing that in the code at all. I, you know, again, if, if we have a denial or for any reason they don't like how something's operating and it's always the city manager and you that, that are the final decision on those things. So that's not going to change again. I'm not looking to change that, that line. Okay, what was the first one again?
Last piece is more of a, kind of more it's a policy piece with taxis.
Yeah, yeah. And so, and you hit on something that it's all out there, right? We're all thinking about this driverless car thing. That is definitely not in our taxi code right now. So again, even if we, even if we dissolve this today, there's still something to think about in the future here. And, and, you know, there's always been complaints, Uber, Lyft, any cab company is going to have complaints. Uber and Lyft is also very good at challenging licensing or that. There's only a few major players in the country and the world that have actually taken on Uber and Lyft. Minneapolis and St. Paul do it, but in a kind of a reverse engineered it. They have a very high rate, high dollar amount license fee. So Uber and Lyft just pays a big dollar amount and it's more of a reacting, reactive code to them. And Mac, of course, has all the power because it's a high secure place. So they had to, they had to play well with Mac. But, yeah, as we, you know, I, I don't have the answer for that is what I'm trying to say, I guess. Everything is so tech-driven now. How do we, how do we really control that? We've even seen, you know, I think some of us maybe have experienced it where you call an Uber and it's supposed to be Doug and a Chevy and the Chevy pulls up and it's Bill. It's like, oh, yeah, I'm driving for Doug today. It's like, come on, you know what? But, you know, the app still tracks it. You still have your, your, you know, that, what Uber and Lyft has created is actually, well, we all know, it's pretty genius. But, yeah, how do we regulate that? Especially when they're running double duty Uber and Lyft. You know, those questions, something we need to dig into and that driverless car thing. I totally see that we'd want to be on top of that when it comes down. So, so no answers for you tonight, but.
I think that's fair. And I don't, it could be unfair for me to ask, ask that, but I just wanted to kind of throw that out there that I am interested in that. And that, that, I don't know if other council members are, but I know I am, so.
Councilmember De La Sandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, just a quick question on, we recently did some, some license stuff around THC and I don't see us going to consent agenda on that. I just was curious if we should, did we already do that or did we, did we want to have public hearings on those separate from all this other stuff? Or should we just do that too? I just wanted to kind of tease that in and ask the question since we were. I didn't know if there was a reason we weren't including that particular license type in this revision.
Mr. Mayor and Council, we treated THC exactly like tobacco. So again, we do our reviews on that, but none of that ever comes to your attention. And again, right now, with just the hemp-based THC, if I can say it that way, just, but it's still THC. But yeah, right now, we're, we took a very small baby step on this one. Depending on where the state goes with this and if we even still are going to be involved and we go to full, full marijuana, would we treat that more like liquor? Would we want to have your opinions on that? And again, would that be a consent or a full-blown? But I think we're all waiting to see what happens this summer on that.
Okay, that works for me. Thank you.
Councilmember Martin. Thank you, Mayor. And apologies, I want to take the discussion way off into left field. But just in general, why, why do we license amusement devices?
Again, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Martin, it's based on gambling. Is there a gambling device? And, and my favorite, the restaurant's now gone, but I was, I was there during the opening and doing my counting of the machines and actually their local Larkin and Hoffman attorney representative was there too and we're schmoozing and talking and we both saw it at the same time. We're like, what's that? Oh yeah, you can go up and you do this and you could win a beer and you could do, alcohol is involved. It was basically a gambling device. We're both, and before I could say anything, he's like, get that thing out of here. So it was nice having their attorney standing there. But yeah.
Assembled the ultimate.
So, yeah, it, it, there, I have, I've run into two my whole career, but yeah, it's, that's all it is. It's just seeing if it's a gambling device. So again, for this per machine thing, you know, some of these larger arcades, it's like, and they take machines out in and out all the time, so.
So are, are we going to say Mall of America and going to the, just the entertainment arcade right now for the, I don't know, Big Buck Hunter games? Are we having to license machines like that or it's just like electronic?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All those, all those arcades are licensed with us and the bigger arcades pay a bigger fee because it's three dollars a machine and the little ones pay that base fee. When all it really is, it should just be that base fee. I just have to go in and just do my walk around and I can catch those. It's probably won't even be an annual one. I'll, I'll just hit them when I'm out.
Well, that's, yeah, in conversation in front of the time, I'd just be curious what the purpose of a city licensing entertainment arcade is for a drop clown machine and things like that. I'm happy to inspect all the Golden T machines and the Big Buck Hunter machines.
Yeah, you should actually play them. I know, the, the, the other, if you go into, shoot, I had it. Cubby Jacks, when you walk in, there's a slot machine there. It's just the face. But alcohol, state alcohol enforcement came out to do an inspection about the same time I was. He saw it and he called the gambling guys out because they were so freaked out by that. They put a quarter and it fell straight through on the floor, but.
Thank you very much.
When they see gambling, they get jumpy.
I, I think, I appreciate your questions, Councilmember Martin, and I think it reflects that a lot of what we have in, in licensing, in regulations, in our sign ordinance, in so many different things. It was written a while ago and it probably made sense at the time, but it might not now. And it's, that's why I appreciate Mr. Junker and others taking a look at these different things and trying to update them and bringing this up into twenty twenty-three as opposed to back in the, back in nineteen thirty-six when, you know, there was trouble when the, that pool table came to town and whatever it was, you know, it's, it, it's a different time. And I think it's, it's time to update it in a lot of different ways. And so I appreciate the effort that you put into this and the thought that you put into this for, for our different requirements and as they reflect where we are now as opposed to where we were years ago. Council, any additional input? Councilmember De La Sandro?
Mostly just a question on, on steps. So we're providing you feedback tonight. And then does this, does this all have to come, these code amendments have to come back for a public hearing, right? The irony is not lost on me. Just checking. Thank you.
So yeah, so just looking for your guidance. We can go through page by page again, kind of what we did last time. We did some code amendments, just looking for your guidance, you know, do you, you're okay with it going away? Or do you want us to, or even if we say it goes away, get on it and start retooling the new one for the future. But, yeah, I think some of them are blatantly obvious, but there might be a couple in there that I want to talk about.
Council, anything else? Oh, Councilmember De La Sandro.
Apologies, Mr. Mayor. I was just ready to move to the discussion portion where we, where I gave you my opinions on what.
Oh, please do. That's what I think. I think we are in that, we're, we have been there. So yes, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. So I, I don't have a, I personally don't think that, I, I like the idea of consent for new licenses and on alcohol, sorry, on alcohol, consent for new licenses and renewals by staff personally. But that's just me. I'll just start with that. On massage, I'm fine with staff. On amusement devices, love the fee idea, don't need to see them. And on taxi cabs, I think it should go away.
There you go. Anybody else? Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I generally agree with Councilmember De La Sandro. The only change I would have is the amusements to Councilmember Martin's point, at some point, maybe those go away too. And just allow people to complain if they see gambling devices or something in there and then we can go in and say, hey, that's not allowed. But I don't know that we need to regulate too heavily. Big Buck Hunter, Golden T or, I don't know. Full tilt, you know, how many devices do they have? Must be a lot. So that's not a serious question. You don't have to answer it.
Because I do not know that offhand. Yep. Yeah.
Others? Any other feedback? I think you had it in the right direction and to, to simplify this and to, to make it, to bring it up to date, to simplify it and to make it more logical for both city staff and for the end fee payers. I think it makes good sense.
And so if I may, Mayor, to clarify again, liquor, new and renewal on consent? Everybody?
I'm comfortable with that.
And massage at all or consent?
Staff? All right.
Because I body art, I do body art already. Consent and massage is not a lot of difference, so.
Councilmember Loman, a question?
I will just say, after having the one hearing, you know, in my district about that, I would prefer to see it on, I consent.
Okay.
Yeah. Just, that's just one council member's opinion, so.
Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So in the instances where there may be a license, somebody, a, a business requesting a license or renewal of a license and there have been issues in the past, would those be instances where you would bring them in front of council or put it on consent? Because I personally, I would, I'd be fine with massage not even being on consent. But I'm thinking for massage or alcohol, if there have been other issues in the past, I'm just wondering kind of what's, what would be the process for those?
Mr. Mayor and Council and, and city attorney, I would assume if we're dealing with any issues, that would be a public hearing and we'd definitely be bringing those back to you.
Okay, so to Councilmember Loman's concern about the issue that we had a year, last year, I think, or the year before, I mean, that would be something that, I mean, we would, it would be brought in front of council anyway. Yeah, okay. So yeah, I am comfortable with those. I don't even, I wouldn't need to see them on consent.
Councilmember Loman?
So the renewal though wouldn't be, so would say you had a problem?
Yeah, massage renewals don't come in front of you now. We handle massage renewals annually. It's just those new. And like I said, these last, the last time I brought a new one, that was actually.
So maybe, maybe I'm asking for a new policy. So that's a totally different thing. I just think that if there is a problem, I, I, I think it'd be nice to have that renewal come for the council. So if we have any questions and we could ask those questions.
Councilmember De La Sandro?
Quick point of clarification. If I recall, I was, I was not on council at the time, but I was an observer. But the issue we had not that long ago was the renewal was coming up and, and we were declining it. And that's why it came to administrative hearing, if I remember. hearing, if I remember that correctly. So, so you, you would, you brought the decline. We declined this massage person's license because of the investigation that happened that, that yielded criminal, whatever it was. That would still happen. So if, if they came and applied and you were denying them the application and they wanted to appeal, it would still come before this body, correct?
Correct. So again, I'm not looking at changing any procedures per se, suspend and revoke. I have no power.
Understood.
That's you guys. I can deny a license and per code, they can, if they don't like it, they have 20 days to come and, and, and appeal that. And that's not going to go either. And again, those are so few and far between. I can probably count the times I've done that on one hand over the years, but yeah, none of that's changing. Still the same background, still the same checks. Everything's going to be the same. We do need your approval to file liquor with the state, but nobody said it had to be the grand public hearing.
No feedback?
I think so. I think we can do that.
Councilmember Mowat?
Thank you, Mayor. One thing I, I do have is I see that Brooklyn Park removed their license requirements. So I just want to make sure we're checking in with them to see if any unintended consequences came out of removing the taxi requirements as we progress through this.
And, and what really got me going is Richfield's the one that kicked off my email string and we've always worked tight on taxis. So when I saw they were doing it, I'm like, I gotta make a move. So.
All right. Mr. Junker, thank you much.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. Moving on to item 5.2, another discussion and update. This on ranked choice voting. Ms. Scipione, our city clerk is with us this evening. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm excited to be here before you tonight to discuss ranked choice voting. I'm not sure if you're aware, but 2023 is an election year here for our city council. And so ahead of that election, I got some laughs at nine o'clock at night. That's pretty impressive, right? Before we look to move forward with our planning for our 2023 election cycle, I wanted to kind of take a look back at what we learned in 2021 from our first election cycle and walk through some staff recommendations for changes from what we did in 2021. And the goal tonight is to get some council feedback on those proposed changes, document any additional questions you might have that I didn't answer in the presentation, and then move forward with an ordinance amendment for council to consider in a public hearing at a future date. So with that, I'll have you go to the first slide, please. So as everyone on council knows, right, 2021 was our first ranked choice voting election in Bloomington. In that election, we had a 26% turnout, which equated to just over, well, 15,504 votes cast. I have a hard time estimating. I like exact numbers. So we had three city races on the ballot in 2021. We had a council member at large, which every voter in the city had on their ballot. And then we had two district races. In the council member at large, we had three candidates that filed and in both of the district races, we had four candidates that filed. All three of those races required tabulation rounds. So we conducted tabulation rounds for the council member at large and that required two rounds of tabulation before we had someone that met that threshold. District three required one round of tabulation and then district four required two rounds. So those rounds of tabulation were conducted over three days. And so those were held the Thursday through Sunday after, or excuse me, through Saturday after the election. Looking forward now to 2023, we have quite a few races on the ballot. We have the mayoral race, which will be on every voter's ballot. We have council member at large, which will be on every voter's ballot. We have a council member at large special election, which will be on every voter's ballot. And then we have all four of our district council members. So every voter will have one district council member on their ballot as well. We have a school board, which is elect up to three. And then we have up to three local option sales tax questions that, you know, as a planner, I have to plan that we're, we need space for those questions. We'll see how those shake out at the legislature this year. Because of all of the races that we have on the ballot, we expect this to be a very highly visible election year and we're expecting about a 40% turnout, which equates to almost 22,000 ballots cast. So it's a much larger volume potentially than we saw in our 2021 election. So in anticipation of this very large election cycle that we have, staff have three recommended changes, which I will go through in more detail throughout the presentation, but I just kind of want to lay out what those three are right away. We are recommending to decrease the number of candidate rankings on the ballot, to require write-ins to register in order for us to tabulate their vote separately, and to conduct tabulation rounds via the spreadsheet method versus the hand count method that we did in 2021. So with that, I'm going to move into our suggested change number one, which is decreasing the number of rankings on the ballot. Currently, our code provides for up to six rankings on the ballot. That, that number is dependent on the number of candidates that file. So if we have five candidates that file, we have five rankings. If we have eight candidates that file, we have six rankings. We stop at six. If we have three candidates that file, we have three rankings. Okay? Our recommendation is to change that number of rankings, that max number of rankings, to the number of candidates up to three. And if we go to the next slide, the reason for that recommendation is a ballot spacing issue. The voting equipment that we use allows for up to three columns across the ballot. And you can see I've got a sample up here. Whenever we have more than three candidates file, we have to add an additional row on the ballot, which pretty much doubles the space that that race takes up on our ballot. State law requires that our ballots be on one piece of paper. We call them ballot cards in state law. It can be a two-sided ballot, but it needs to be on one piece of paper. There's one exception for if judicial races don't all fit on one ballot on the backside, there can be a separate ballot for judicial races. So there's an exception. If you've ever voted and said, but I was handed two ballots, that was likely the exception. And I know it has happened in Bloomington before. But for our races, we have to have everything on one piece of paper. That's going to be a challenge potentially if we have a lot of candidates that file for office, because every voter will have four RCV races on their ballot, plus a school board, plus potentially three local option sales tax questions. So I'm a big fan of visuals. And so if you can go to the next slide, please. What we did is Hennepin County was nice enough to create some example ballots for us and I'm calling them full ballots, right? Lots of candidates filed for each race. We have all three sales tax questions on there and a decent number of candidates that filed for school board. And what you'll notice on these full ballot examples, first of all, is it's three pages, right? If we receive more than, more than three candidates that file in these races, we can only really fit two RCV races on the front side and two on the backside, right? And then you can see that pushes everything else to a third side, a second piece of paper. And you can see by the size of these questions, right, that even if we only have maybe a couple of these where we have three or more, three, more than three candidates that file, we're still having an issue trying to fit all of this additional, all these additional questions and the school district race onto the backside of that ballot. So for comparison purposes, we'll go to the next slide, please. So we have a full ballot example with three rankings instead of the six that we currently have. And so this ballot is the exact same number of candidate filings that we saw on the example with six rankings, but only one row across per RCV race, right? Because we only have three, we don't have to add that additional row, row if additional candidates file. We have more than three filings. That leaves us space on the backside of the ballot for the potential city questions and the school board race. That gives us some wiggle room too. So if we get a substantial, substantial number of filings and maybe one of these has to get bumped to the backside, we're still able to play with the space that we have and keep everything within one ballot card, one piece of paper. All right.
So Mayor, are we taking questions now or?
So for comparison purposes, I'll have you move to the next slide. Thank you. So currently, these are the other RCV cities in Minnesota. St. Paul currently has six rankings. The other ones all have three rank possible, or maximum of three rankings. I will point out that in St. Paul, they do not have council members at large. They have a mayoral and a district. So the most, the highest number of RCV races that a voter is going to see on that ballot are two, as opposed to the four that we're looking at for 2023 here in Bloomington. I should also note that St. Paul's ballot layout, even though they're in a different county, has the same constraints that our ballot layout does with our county equipment. The highest number of columns that they can have across is three. So St. Paul's ballot layout looks very similar to what ours does now, where they have three across and then it goes down to four. But it's just because of the number of RCV races, they don't see that same issue with spacing that we're potentially facing. So when I was thinking through this presentation, right, I thought, well, if I'm a council member, I would want to know, how, how much are we going to be impacting voters, right? Because in 2021, one of the reasons that we use six rankings, and looking through the minutes, I saw we had a lot of feedback that we should have as many rankings as possible to allow our voters as many choices as possible. And so what I did is I looked back to kind of see, okay, in 2021 on our ballot, how many voters actually used all of those rankings, right? And so this chart here shows the undervotes per ranking each different race. And an undervote means that the voter left that ranking blank. So you can see from this chart, right, first ranking, very low number of undervotes. And then as you move higher and higher up in the ranking numbers, you see quite a substantial drop-off in the number of folks who are using those rankings. And then I also wanted to note that we had a decent percentage of voters in each race that were ranking the same candidate all the way across the ballot. And so those aren't undervotes, right? We, we deal with those in tabulation rounds and reallocating those ballots, but it does kind of get to the heart of how many rankings folks are actually using across that ballot. But I know that one election in Bloomington is a pretty small sample size, right? And so I also then, if we go to the next slide, wanted to take a look to see, well, what were St. Paul voters doing in their last large citywide election in 2019? And I found that they had fairly similar results. Where you see NA means that not that many candidates filed, and so that's why there isn't a ranking there available. But you can see that there's a pretty substantial drop-off in numbers of voters utilizing those rankings as we get higher up in the ranking number. Sorry, you're all looking so intently at the, I don't want to move on too quickly. So that's our first proposed change. Our second proposed change is amending our city code to require register, or writing candidates to register in order to have their votes counted separately from just a conglomerate write-in category. Currently, we are required to tabulate all of our write-ins. What we found in 2021 is that slows down our tabulation rounds, because what we have to do in every tabulation round is we have to separate out the pile of write-ins and then we have to go through and document every single writing candidate and how many votes they received. And then very typically, they do not have enough votes to move forward to the next round of tabulation. So then we have to batch eliminate those candidates. We have to keep a running list then of who's been batch eliminated. So when we go to our second round of tabulation and we see a write-in, we have to check the list. Have they already been eliminated or is this a new writing candidate that we need to keep track of? And so it, it slows down the process for us as tabulators. It also caused confusion when we were reporting out results. If you take a look at this results spreadsheet from the at-large race in 2021, the candidates that filed for office are the three little lines at the top. Everything else is write-ins that were either added in the first round, batch eliminated, or then added in the second round and batch eliminated. And a lot of the questions that I received regarding results reporting were, what's with all these extra people on here? And how come some of them didn't appear until the second round when in the first round they weren't there? And it did cause some confusion for our residents in, in reading those results and understanding what was going on with those write-ins. Next slide, please. So the way the registered write-in process works is writing candidates register at least seven days before the election. So they register with the city clerk's office to say, hey, city clerk, I'm John Smith and I am a writing candidate and I want you to count any votes for John Smith in this particular race. Okay? Then on election night or during tabulation rounds after, we check all of the write-ins for John Smith and they get their own line on that tabulation spreadsheet, right, or on our, our final canvassing results. But if we have all of those other names that aren't registered with us, there's one report outline for that, write-ins, and then they're batch eliminated in that first round. So it makes our reporting a lot cleaner. It also makes the tabulation process a lot smoother and faster for us because we're not constantly checking this list of who's in and who's out. Is this a new one? It just provides some efficiency. State law does allow charter cities to require registration of writing candidates. We did not have this in our ordinance in 2021 because there was a charter amendment or there's a charter provision that could have potentially been contradictory to allowing for the registration of write-ins. And so in 2021, we cleaned up that language in our charter that now allows us to have this write-in registration process if we so choose. Minneapolis, St. Paul, St. Louis Park, and Minnetonka all have the registered write-in process and it is something that's available to any statute, or excuse me, charter city within the state. All right, and change three. So change three has to do with how we tabulate those races that need to go to tabulation rounds. Currently, in the state of Minnesota, there are two methods available for tabulation round. There's the hand count method, which is what we used in 21, and there's this spreadsheet method. 2021, we did use that hand count method. Because there were fewer races on the ballot, it was a good year to be able to show, visually show any resident that wanted to see how we are doing that hand reallocation of those ballots and visually getting to see that. The tricky part is, is for 2023, we have a lot more races on the ballot and probably a lot more ballots themselves. And so our recommendation is to use the spreadsheet method in 2023. We need to ensure that we canvass our results, that our results are done between three and 10 days after the election. And so there's a concern if we do that hand count method that we're going to be running up really tight to that 10-day requirement to canvass those, those results and have them ready for you as the council canvassing board. I will note that that tabulation method is determined by administrative rules. It does not require an ordinance amendment, but I do want to ensure that the council is aware that staff is moving in this direction and receive any feedback or questions that you might have before staff start drafting administrative rules to go through with council at a later date. So as a brief overview of the two different methods that are available to us, in the hand count method, we have a team of trained RCV judges that sort and count the physical ballots for tabulation rounds. So we train approximately 24 judges. They have to attend a special training session and then we have, you know, quite a substantial staff that then is doing those hand tabulations. We also then require police presence in the room for ballot security. That's an additional kind of expense and frankly strain on our police department sometimes. We found that the time to tabulate is a half, half day to a full day for our district races and then one to two days for our citywide races. So if you think of everything that we have on the ballot, if we have quite a few that go to tabulation round, again, we're running up against that 10-day clock. With the hand count tabulation, that can't be, really begin until the Thursday after the election. On Wednesday, we need to get the ballots back from Hennepin County, right? Hennepin County counts all the absentee ballots. And so we need to have staff with police escort go down to Hennepin County, collect those ballots and bring them back. And then we need time to get those organized and ready to go for opening the actual cases the next morning for hand counting. So there is a delay of a day before we can even start that work. With method two, the spreadsheet method, we had teams of trained staff who are experts in using Excel and they use what's called the cast vote record to sort and count ballots on a spreadsheet. So I know it's small, but that's, that is actually an example of the cast vote record from one of our races in 2021. And what you'll see is every row there represents a ballot and how that voter voted on that ballot. And so really, it's a very similar process to the hand count method, except instead of physically moving ballots, you're using Excel to sort for you, right, and do some of the math for you. And do some of the math for you. And how we, how we manage that is there are two teams working at a time on the same race, and there are check-in points throughout that process, right? So once each team gets their first sort done, they stop, they check in with each other, do these match, right? If they don't, we go back and figure out what the issue was. Okay? If they match, then we continue on to the next step. We save a copy of the spreadsheet at every single step of the process, so we know exactly what happened at every single step. And that electronic cast vote record is maintained both here at the city, and it's maintained at the county level as well. That tabulation is typically complete in two to three days, and the tabulation can begin Wednesday afternoon after the election because we just need the county to securely transmit the cast vote record from their office to the city, which is a lot less time-consuming than physically organizing and getting the ballots to our office. So again, next steps. So tonight, I would love to receive some direction from the city council regarding how you would like us to proceed with any ordinance amendments, and if you're comfortable with the proposed change to the administrative rules, gather any questions you still might have. We are proposing April 17th for ordinance consideration and public hearing. And then we will be drafting our administrative rules and present an updated administrative rules to council, so you get a more detailed look at how that spreadsheet tabulation works and what you could expect to see in the days after the election. With that, I'm available for questions and feedback.
Thank you, Ms. Capione, appreciate it. Council questions or feedback? Councilmember Lohman.
Thank you, that was very thorough presentation. So I'll just kind of tick through the one through three here. So one, it doesn't seem like there's really, it's not really a choice. There'd be no way to, to pull off a six, five, four way of, you know, kind of ranking folks with the number of folks that we have to be able to do that. And that's just a limitation of the ballot, right? I mean, maybe technology will, will solve that. I do know that there was a great deal of interest of that when we first, first did that. And then the secondary piece, I remember there being quite a bit of discussion at the Charter Commission with regard to a large group of folks who were really opposed to having this registration for, you know, for, you know, for the vote, the seven days out there. I don't remember all, I'm not one of them, but I do know that there was a substantial amount of people who were really opposed to that. I don't remember all the rationales behind it. But is there a reason why, one, we need to have seven days? Could it be 15 days? Could you eliminate that altogether? I'm just, just curious about what, what, what are the rules? What can or can't we do with respect to, to that, that piece?
Mayor and councilmember Lohman, thank you for the question. That seven day mimics the seven-day write-in registration that already exists at the federal, state, and county level. So it's, it's staying consistent with a process that already exists at other levels of government, just not at every city government. And so that's, that's why we recommend staying with that seven.
Okay. That wouldn't put us in any, any kind of, and have any other cities just done away with that, that, that write-in requirement at all? Or is it pretty much, they allow that either to just physically turn it in, or, or, I'm just, I'm just curious. Because I know that seven days, that turnaround time is, is pretty difficult. I've heard that, you know, from other city clerks, that, that seven time, or seven-day turnaround period.
Mayor and city councilmember Lohman, I don't, administratively, I don't see concern with receiving those names seven days in advance and then being able to adjust for that when we are doing our, our tabulation. Some of the, some of the difficulty in the turnaround time or the short turnaround time for those registered write-ins are for those entities that count write-ins on election night in the polling places. And then that gives you a lot shorter timeframe to provide direction to your election judges. But that's not how the, we have teams of judges that come in after election day to go through those registered, to go through those write-ins and review those. And so for us, it's, it's not the same kind of administrative issue that it might be for other entities.
Thanks for clarifying that. And then the last piece is on the, on the spreadsheet or the other, other process. And there's no way to get that transmitted the same day. It's, it's always that, that, that day after, that Wednesday after the?
Mayor and city councilmember Lohman, that is correct. Anecdotally, it's typically more like Wednesday morning, but I don't want to overpromise and underdeliver, so I think Wednesday afternoon is a safer bet. And especially, it kind of depends on what other cities have going on and how many other elections there are going on, because the county's doing that same process for the other R C V cities, and they're also providing data and support for other cities that are running elections and off years. So it kind of depends on their workflow as well.
Well, let me just say that, to me, it's pretty straightforward, all three of those recommendations. I'm not sure if you're recommending the spreadsheet or not, but we'd go for that. And the other, other things just make a lot of sense to me.
Councilmember Muah.
Thank you, Mayor. My, my concern is with the spreadsheet tabulation and the recommendation to use it for 2023. And it sounds like then the following election, we'd go back to a hand count? Or is this, moving forward, we will be using the spreadsheet tabulation?
Thank you, Mayor and councilmember Muah. We do have the opportunity to reassess after every election cycle. I would suggest that we continue moving forward with the spreadsheet method if we find that it works well for us. We are also hoping that there is software that would do this work for us, but it is not certified in the state of Minnesota, and there needs to be some legislative changes to make that happen. So all of us R C V cities are kind of doing this and hoping that, that that may move forward at some point. And so it's kind of, I think every year we'll assess what the, what the appropriate tabulation method is. But, you know, most folks would like results sooner rather than later. And so I think spreadsheet may be the way we move forward in the future as well.
Okay, and just, I think just for the national conversation regarding voter integrity, I think if we do flip-flop it, it leads to bad optics. So if, as we review, I think having something standard that we would continue with would help with that.
Mayor and councilmember Muah, if I may add, as far as transparency with the spreadsheet method, our ordinance does require that if we choose to use the spreadsheet method for tabulation, that we hold what's called a post-election review. And so what happens is at the canvassing board meeting, we put all of the districts or all the races that had required tabulation rounds in hat. We pull out one of those, and then we do a hand count that any voter can come and watch. And we, we physically go through the hand count process. That happens after the canvassing board, right? So we're not, we hold it quickly after the canvassing board meeting. But that allows voters to still come in and be able to see that process. And the way our ordinance is written is that if, for some reason, that count were off by a certain percentage in that district, then we're going to increase that hand tabulation. And it could result, you know, in recounting all of those races. If for some reason it was off, that's a very similar process to what already exists in state statute after every statewide general election.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick things with the registration. I'm assuming that if somebody registered, and/or even if they didn't register, they would still be subject to campaign finance regulations? They'd have to file a report if they spent or received over $750? Is that accurate or not accurate?
Mayor and former acting city, or acting Mayor Nelson. That is, that is correct. Anyone who is running for, for office that has met that $750 threshold is required to start submitting campaign finance reports. If a candidate were elected and hadn't submitted any of those reports, they're still required to follow certification with our office saying that they didn't meet that requirement.
Okay, sounds good. And then if there are only two people that run for a race, what does the ranked choice voting look like?
We have Mayor and councilmember Nelson. We have two rankings on our ballot, and so you would see each candidate in a write-in available in each ranking.
Okay. Just seems odd to rank when there's only two people. I want them or, or not. And then my last one was regarding the, and I appreciate what you said about the transparency because I do think that's an issue for a lot of people, and it looks like you've got a process where everything is triple, quadruple-checked, available for people to understand how we got there. And then the hand count, my only recommendation, Mayor, would be that when you draw out of the hat, because of the timing of the special election, I don't know when the timing of this would happen, that maybe the special election isn't one that you recount? I don't know how that, I guess, maybe that's a question. How does that work? Because that person, individual would be seated immediately after the canvassing.
Mayor and councilmember Nelson, we actually have built into our timeframe for when we would seat a new city council member that's elected as part of that special election. And that would allow, the way the council meetings fall, that would allow us time to hold a post-election review if that were, that race were selected. But I will note that our city code, first, if there are district council seats that are part of a tabulation process, we first pick from that pool. And we'd only go to an at-large race if we don't have any districts that require tabulation rounds. So I apologize, I wasn't clear on that the first time I spoke. But we, we do have it set up so that we're not potentially recounting all 2200, or 2200, 22,000 ballots if we have a kind of a smaller subset to look at.
As expected, you've thought this well out, so, yeah, it's good.
And I think it would be worthwhile for anybody watching and for anybody who will watch on tape to remind folks again, if any of the, if any of the races, if a candidate has 50% plus one, it does not go to a tabulation round. The school board will not be part of ranked choice voting, and the potential ballot questions will not be ranked choice voting either. So I, I think it's just to clarify people, for people once again, and to remind them once again, because it's been a few years now since we've done this, and I'm sure they will need reminders at least a couple more times before this becomes second nature to them. Councilmember DeLisandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So yes, thank you very much for being so thorough about this, Ms. Capione. I think it makes a lot of sense. The, my only question, I, I wonder if anybody else is just one, like, maybe it doesn't matter, but it feels like the, the up to three thing is kind of arbitrary based on the ballot and not necessarily because it's the, a good policy, so to speak. And I'm just kind of curious, I, I personally am fine with it, so don't mistake my commentary for being against that or anything. I'm just curious if, if anybody else is, is, like, we wouldn't go back and be like, oh, we'll do six again because it's, in 2025, we don't have as many on the council or whatever. Like, I just want to be sure that we are, if we're doing this, we're doing this for consistency purposes, and that the last time we change it because I, you know, and we're not doing it because all seven of us are up for election or anything like that. Like, it's not what's happening. We're, we're doing this, and we're going to do it like this going forward. I just want to be certain that we've been very clear with people about why that decision is being made. And is there, was there any consideration for anything other than that? So not six, because that's too many, but maybe four or whatever, just to throw out like how thorough you've been on everything else. What, what were your thoughts on that? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmember DeLisandro. So the limitation that we have and why three is a very common number that you see in other cities, it just all goes back to that ballot layout. And we are limited to three columns across the ballot right now with the current technology we use. I did ask Hennepin County if we could change and go up to four, because I know that in the, the last primary election, right, we had to figure out how to fit four major parties across our ballots, and so it has been done. The issue with that is that we would have to be set up in the computer system as a completely separate election. And so all of the results reporting would have to be manual, including us taking all of the cards with the results on it and physically getting them to the county. And that will delay results reporting quite significantly. And so that didn't really seem like a viable option for us. It would also delay then those results getting posted on the Secretary of State's website. And so really, it's, it's a function of the way that our system lays out the ballots. And because the other three R C V cities in Hennepin County all have three rows, we really don't have the op, or excuse me, columns, we really don't have the option to add that fourth or fifth column all in the same row.
That's helpful, thank you. Just a quick follow-up if I may, Ms. Capione. Why did we do six to start with then? If this was, I mean, because we probably could have seen this coming, I know you saw it coming because you're very smart. So I'm just kind of curious why we went with six the first time if we knew that this was, we were going to have to make this change.
Mayor and councilmember DeLisandro, thank you for that vote of confidence. I actually started in April of 2021, so most of this work had been completed before I began. We also, I did read through the minutes, right, as, as the council was considering this, and there was a lot of public sentiment that we should rank as many candidates as possible. And I think that the, the spacing issue just wasn't on the forefront of everybody's mind because we didn't have as many races on the ballot in 2021. And so it's just a different, a different situation in 2023.
Thanks for the questions, councilmember DeLisandro. And if I recall, the, the conversation was, yes, it was the desire to have as many options as possible. But I think there was also the conversation that it being the first time, there was the understanding that we probably would adjust this to make it work best. And not necessarily even from a, does it fit on the piece of paper standpoint, but to look at the undercounts, the, the charts that were, were brought forward, I, I don't know how many votes were actually cast for a fifth or sixth choice in any of the elections. So I think, I think to go with the three top choices for a voter is probably, is probably about right. It feels about right in terms of just looking at the undercounts. It certainly fits on the piece of paper, but it also just, it feels like the majority of voters will make their decisions in the top three and not necessarily go to a fourth or a fifth or a sixth candidate. So I, I would echo what has been said. I think obviously the, the three alternatives, I think it's just kind of a, I don't know if we can do anything but that, and so that does, does seem to make sense. I do like the, the, the better control and manageability of requiring the writing, writings to register, especially as it meets the other requirements at, at the, the county and the state level. I mean, if you have to require, if you have to register seven days in advance there, it makes sense that we could follow along with that as well. And the spreadsheet tabulation, again, going back to our discussions, I think when we first started talking about this, the first time through, there was the desire, we wanted to make sure it was done by hand, as you said, to show folks, this is how it works and this is how it all kind of plays out from a very, very visual standpoint. So people could actually see the, the ballots moving around and see how it all worked. I know that the, the spreadsheet method is, is a reliable method, it's been used before, and it's, it's used other places as well. And I like the checks and balances that come with it also, that you can go back and you can check your work, and we can make sure that everything, that, that it does match and, and that those checks are done frequently as you continue the count and continue through the tabulation. So I'm, I'm comfortable with the, the changes that are proposed here, and I think it will, it'll continue to, to streamline and improve the process that we, frankly, we knew was probably in the offing as we came up with this, just looking for ways to make sure that we did it as well as possible.
Thank you, Mayor and council, I appreciate all the feedback.
Thank you. Item 5.3 on our agenda is another discussion regarding our public health building and the near-term facility needs of a building that is past its useful life. And I think that's a nice way of putting it. Dr. Nick Kelly is with us, our administrator of our Public Health Department. Good evening and welcome. Mr. Fabrucci, did you want to tee this up at all? Dr. Kelly, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers? So we're going to talk about the public health facility and kind of some near-term needs that we have. Back in 1981, our facility opened. At that point, it was a little over 20 years old. Engineering outgrew it, and we took it over, and we opened it with a ribbon from Big, a little piece of blue ribbon that was under the ice. And as you see the newspaper clipping there, about 300 people showed up. It was a big deal, and we were very excited to open that space. It consolidated public health. At that point, I think that was our fifth location within the city that we were working out of. Prior to that, we were working out of a building on Low. Prior to that, we were working out of a, a building on Logan and at Creekside. And then everybody came to the public health facility. And one of the things that is really prominent about the space is it is a tight and challenging space for us to be in with our staffing and with some of the other realities of a building that was built in the early 60s with a projected 40-year lifespan. We have exceeded that quite a bit and struggling to find ways to make the building work for us fairly well. And so our new facilities manager, Kristia Davis, came over and we worked together to give you a video tour of the facility to help with our next part of our conversation. So hello, I'm Nick Kelly. I'm the Public Health Administrator for the City of Bloomington. And we have Kristia, our new facilities manager from Public Works. And we're talking about our public health facility today and some of the challenges that we have with providing the high-quality service the City of Bloomington is known for in the space that we have today. One of the challenges you see is, this is an incredibly small desk space. But then when I pulled out of my desk, I hit my coworker. There's, there is no space to really move around, especially if there's two people back here. It makes it incredibly challenging. Our staff are always working with clients. And so can, if you can imagine working with clients and you're on the phone, working through a complex medical issue, or maybe you're working with an older adult and you need to increase the volume a little bit. It is really hard to do in this space. If we were fully staffed right now, there'd be 57 people working out of this building. I have six offices along that wall and I have 33 cubes. The staff that are out here are often bringing a bunch of resources out, so scales, other equipment. And if you're trying to wheel a bag or anything else, it is incredibly challenging to even navigate this walkway, let alone think about, it's not even close to the minimum width you need to, to move product that way. So this is our, our WIC lobby. So this is where the, the families that we serve across Bloomington or Diner Ridgefield come in and have a seat. They have a few toys to play with, a suite of resources that we have available to them. But this gets really tight, and it's, it's not the kind of space you would normally see in a more clinical setting. This is the room we have in WIC where we do a lot of our lactation support. And so you can see with the table for the, the actual work side. And then we have our chair where we're doing a lot of our lactation support. How incredibly tight this space gets. Imagine a car seat, a parent, another person like our peer counselors, along with our lactation consultant and the mom. It gets very, very tight in here. So this is the, the lab space that we have in our building. And you can see it is a kind of a tight cramped space. We have a fridge and a freezer in here, and we have a fridge and a freezer in a separate room. So it's a, a challenge from a staff standpoint when we're packing up vaccine like we did for a lot of our COVID clinics, where we did our 20,000 vaccines in the community. We don't have storage sufficient in our building. So across the parking lot, we have a space where we have about 700 square feet of storage in a, a public workspace. But this is where we store some of the stuff that we use on a more regular basis. So staff aren't constantly going across the parking lot to try and get the resources for the, the clients we serve. So our automatic door has recently broke. And so some of the primary clients that we have coming to our building are pregnant people and individuals with young children. And so that often means a stroller, a car seat, and lots of other things, like a diaper bag. So coming to a building to get services where we don't have the ability for automatic doors to open and having to go through two sets of doors is a challenge often for our clients.
This is a staff bathroom, so it doesn't have some of the accessibility needs. But this is a bathroom that hasn't been remodeled at all, so you can tell the age. And an additional challenge for this bathroom is that this bathroom holds the only water heater for the building. The water heater is only a small three-gallon heater with the pipes going elsewhere in the building. So this is a very old technology. Now you could do point-of-use or other things that are much more efficient, both for the environment and otherwise. And this is an example of one of our mechanical rooms in the building. And as you can see, this is very old, it is well past its useful life. Everything is mechanical. We do have some pneumatic controls, but that's our air compressor in the corner, which you'll hear tick on. So this is a very challenging space. In 1960, they were planning for reusing air more than they do now. Now there's a priority, especially, especially since COVID-19, to bring in external air and fresh air. Because we don't have the ability to bring in fresh air, we have these HEPA filters placed throughout the building to try to clean the air. These are not ideal. It is much better to have more fresh air and more air exchanges, as we've done in Civic Plaza.
So given the age of the building, it was not built with an integrated fire system. And so we've made little modifications over time. But one of the things that we have in the building is we have an air horn. So in case we need to evacuate, alert staff to get out of the building. There's an air horn that sits back here by our kitchen that staff can use to sound the alarm that we need to get out of the building.
A facility assessment in 2015 found problems with the building's critical infrastructure, including electrical, HVAC, which are all original to the building. In addition, the building's energy use intensity rating is among the worst of the facilities in the city. There was a public health service assessment done in 2018. At that time, it was also determined that it did not make financial sense to remodel this building. It made more sense to invest in a new space.
So this, this space was built in the early 1960s and had a, a life expectancy anticipated of a little over 40 years. Now, we're, we're in 2023, this, this building has really exceeded that life expectancy by quite a bit. Our staff do incredible work. We serve an incredible community. And we can do that so much better in a space that meets the needs and the, and the way Bloomington provides services in the community, which is one of the reasons why we really need that new facility so that we can do our best work. So as you can see, we, we have a few challenges in our building. And there's some things that are happening right now. I'm incredibly grateful for the support of council last year. Go to the next slide. Last year and this year, with bringing processes forward to, to get a new building with support from the state. So you're very familiar with the sales tax process, where we have a, a Community Health and Wellness Center that's moving forward. If you go to the next slide. There is a, also a state bonding request that the council supported last year and again this year that is moving forward. The, it was in the governor's budget for the building. The legislative process put forward the funding to help with the design. So we will see where that goes. But we have two options at the state level to try and work towards a new building. If you go to the next one. The challenges you saw from the video is, is our need is fairly acute now. We are struggling. We closed down the building for almost two weeks this past summer because it took two weeks to find parts for our HVAC system to cool the facility. I'm always worried I'm going to get the phone call that something else has happened and we're trying to figure out a different place. And so we're trying to figure out what we can do in that short-term interim process because the building has these challenges and needs. And so one of the things we've been doing is we've been having some conversations to try and understand what that leased space or that market looks like. We did some of this work back in 2019. At that time, there wasn't a good option for the city. And then the world changed quite a bit in 2020. If you go to the next slide. So what we're hearing now is the, the market rate, the market has changed a bit. So the vacancies in the, in the south part of the metro that we're looking in, it's about 14%. We have an idea of what the lease rates are. And in conversations with some realtors about what the next steps look like, it, the rates are negotiable. You're having those conversations, you're figuring out what the process looks like. And that normally involves an architect and some other work to try and really understand if you're going to find a leased space, what's the build-out, what's the process, what's the footprint. We've done some of that work internally. But having some external support and validation for that, I think, would be a, a good choice. On the next slide, we talk about, our space right now is about 9,400 square feet. We had that engineering architect assessment kind of looking at needing a standalone space around 20,000 square feet. Our staff looked really hard at how we're operating. We've been able to shrink down that footprint a bit from a leased space standpoint. So we're looking for about 11,000 square feet from a leased space standpoint. We put in some funding for carryover that the council approved to help support the budget side of that, to, to engage a realtor and other parties to figure out what our options are. So we have that from the carryover standpoint. And so the question really that we're bringing tonight from a council standpoint is, are you comfortable, if you go to the next one, Mike? Are, are you comfortable with us working to start that process? And in having a conversation with some real estate professionals, engaging a real estate professional, and really coming back with a, do we have some space here in Bloomington that we can lease in the short term? Recognizing that at some point, we are going to have that long-term solution, likely state-supported. But that's four to five years away. And in the short term, we're looking for a more viable option for our staff and the clients we serve to, to really have that standard of service that Bloomington is known for.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. You answered my first question, what we were talking, what you mean by short term, exactly what that would mean. And i- if we did give the go-ahead on this, what would be some of the parameters, other than size, some of the parameters that you would lay out to a, a realtor, things you are looking at? And, and I'm picturing in my mind centrally-located transit, ample parking, that kind of things. Are there other things along those lines that have been considered?
Yep. So we've looked at, Mayor, we've looked at a few things on that standpoint. One of them is transit. We, many of our clients have transportation challenges. So we want to be much closer than we currently are to transit and accessible that way. We also have some clinical space that we need. So there's some of those parameters, too. We obviously want to stay here in Bloomington. And so we're looking at some of those options from an accessibility standpoint, transit, and then the privacy aspects.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So I just have a couple of questions. I will say, of course, in general, I am supportive of this idea. I think anybody who's been in that public health building in the past probably 10 to 15 years can understand the need. And so, but again, I do have a couple of questions. So a lot of businesses and organizations currently are kind of rethinking the size of their footprint with so many staff now, you know, working from home remotely or in hybrid situations. And I guess I'm just curious, you know, has that been the case for city employees in Bloomington? So have we ever had, I guess I'm looking at you, city manager. Have you and your leadership team kind of assessed where, and the facilities team, obviously, where we're at from kind of an office space perspective, both in terms of just like the capacity that we have and then the actual need? And, and considered moving public health into Civic Plaza where, where there may be more staff who are working from home now more often? And just doing more of like hotel cube spaces and just things like that, kind of reconfiguring where staff are currently?
Mr. Fabrucci?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. Councilmember Carter, the answer is yes. In fact, we have one department that has implemented, we like to call hoteling, where we do have shared spaces. The city attorney can speak to that. It was in the legal department where we've had a, a increase in the number of staff and a change in the utilization of the office space. So they have been at the front edge for our organization in terms of how they have adapted to that. We are also looking at just generally the utilization for Civic Plaza. Mr. Keel and Kristia, our facilities manager, will be working with other departments here to start evaluating that space because we, we've had a number of requests for changes in space. And, you know, council's aware, we've been adding some staff. So how we utilize that space is going to be important. We have in the past looked at the possibility of public health being in Civic Plaza. Previously, that possibility didn't, uh, didn't work with the amount of square footage that we had. But to your point, with the, the change in, in how people are working, you know, more remote employees, it's probably something that we're going to reevaluate at the same time. If council is okay with it, that we go out and look at the rest of the marketplace as well.
So the funding allocation that was made, I think in the last meeting, would that cover the entire duration, or not, I shouldn't say the entire duration? How, how much time does that buy us until there's a new facility or new space identified?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, Councilmember Carter, until we know the specific space, it's hard to answer that question. That, the allocation that you're speaking of, just so everybody is clear, was a, a carryover request that the council approved of $500,000. So that's available to provide the, essentially the seed funding if there is a move outside of the existing building into a different space. As Mr. Kelly indicated, the, the likelihood here is that we're going to be needing a different space for four to five years, presuming that our other facility plans stay on track. So that, that, that amount of funding will not be sufficient. So we will have to incorporate that into our budget planning as well.
Okay, thank you.
Council, additional questions? Councilmember Mula?
Thank you, Mayor. So if we do end up moving to a different building, lease something, what are the plans for the current building then? Are we just going to leave it empty? Or is there a possibility to, to split up the different departments? Like, WIC would move somewhere else, or just thinking those ideas?
Kelly?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Mula? One of the things we've looked at is, is some of those possibilities to what the city manager brought up, of the possibility of moving some of our staff in different places within the city. There's, there's pros and cons to doing that. One of the things that we prided ourselves in is the close coordination of our staff. So right now, we have WIC staff and we have Family Health staff that are part of the same unit. And they often are working with the same clients. And so being in the same space physically, it works virtually too. But oftentimes, if a client's coming in, there's a handoff and a process. We also use the same thing for, for doing vaccinations. So sometimes somebody would come in and be able to go talk to one of our nurses and get a vaccine that they need. So that proximity adds a ton of value. We also did this for almost two years entirely remote. That federal public health emergency is going to go away. And so WIC currently is operating in a hybrid. We anticipate that to continue as a hybrid. But we're not entirely sure what some of the federal parameters will be as that changes in May.
Councilmember Loman?
So my answer to your question is yes, that you asked earlier. And then I know that in the video, that we talked about the idea that it makes, it doesn't make fiscal sense to try to remodel the building. And I do know that there are some residents that are immediately skeptical, you know, when we say that. And we've had the example, the Valley View Pool piece. And then there's also, when we, we had the whole, I'm not sure if you remember, Mayor, with the whole, okay, good. I want to make sure we're not, not speaking on a turn here. And then there's some folks who say, well, you know, we did, you know, redo the fire station or we're looking to ga- gather money to, to redo the fire station. And, and I, I just want to make sure that as we kind of move forward with this, and I think it's a communication piece that we are, are certain and, and just really squash the idea. And it's pretty clear to me, I know we've had several presentations, I know not the same ones, to this body that really lay it out pretty well, why that just doesn't make a whole lot of sense from a square footage standpoint and from just a kind of piece. But I just want to be sure that we're really clear about that. And then secondarily, you know, given what this public health means with respect to our, our strategic priorities, maybe it makes some sense to look to allocate some money from that, that pot as we kind of look, look at the budget going forward. So I just think that makes a, makes a statement for the population by which that we, we do serve.
Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember Lohman, to the point that you made about trying to tell the story better, it's one of the reasons we did the video, because obviously if people can see, it helps instead of just reading about it or hearing from us repeatedly. And, you know, we've tried to make the case over the last couple of years, as we've talked about this, that is a number of issues. It isn't just one reason that we need to move on from this facility. It is, like Mr. Kelly pointed out, or Dr. Kelly, sorry, I didn't mean to demote you there. You know, it is a facility that has well outlived its life expectancy when it was built. The mechanical systems obviously are old, and in some cases, it's hard to find parts. But the other thing that we haven't talked about is how the building operates. It is not at all an energy-efficient building. And so the building itself, just maintaining it is costing us money more so than our other facilities. And then obviously, the issue with the working conditions for employees, and that becomes a recruitment and retention issue, which obviously we're paying much more attention to currently. And then finally, we've said it many times, we have a very clear equity issue in terms of our clients and customers and who we're serving in public health. And the facility that we provide those services from is very different in standard from most of the other facilities in the city. And it's a different population that's using many of those other facilities. And so we want to make sure that we are living up to our own expectations for how we treat and welcome and serve all of the residents of this community.
Councilmember Muwa, councilmember Martin, councilmember DeLisandro?
Thank you, Mayor. And to a point of the city manager's point about hiring and retention, can you give us a feeling of the morale currently of our staff and how they're doing, given the space that they've been working in, so that we can gauge that as well?
Mr. Mayor, councilmember Muwa? We have staff that typically have a very long tenure. And so I have had staff members tell me that they think they will retire from the city before anything changes. It is our last, one of our last hirings, we invited, ended up being virtual, we invited them to come see the building before their first day. That's normally something we try and do, just to make sure people see the space. And then part of our orientation for staff is, this is what the train's like, this is the heating and cooling, so you need to be prepared to be either really, really hot or really cold, and it can change. And so we talk through a bunch of those things with staff as part of that onboarding. And we like our staff in the field and serving the community, and so they, the hybrid reality has been very helpful for that, where we have staff that are in the field constantly serving the community, which also then helps them spend a little bit less time in a space that's not as welcoming and inviting. And we send them over here all the time. Our staff have meetings over here regularly because our conference rooms have very narrow windows, and it's incredibly dark. And so they will come over to City Hall and have meetings in conference rooms that are wall-to-wall windows and have very productive meetings that way.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm guessing to at least a fair extent, this is all kind of up in the air at this point, but what does the communication with our partners in Richfield and Edina look like as not only we're doing the search, but then planning for potential interruption of service during that move? And do we have an idea, in a ballpark, of how long that interruption of service would be for clients, if any?
Mr. Mayor, councilmember Martin? My hope is that we don't see an interruption in services. So if we move into a place in city facility or a leased space, assuming we can still be in our space until that is ready, we should just have a transition. Even if there is a physical gap in coverage, like I said, we were closed for two weeks this summer because of HVAC issues, we didn't disrupt service at all. We're familiar with moving to that hybrid reality and can do that. And additionally, this summer, we'll have our mobile clinic that was supported with some of the ARPA funding that we'll also be able to provide that service to.
Councilmember DeLisandro?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nice to see you, Dr. Kelly. First off, thank you for all that you do. I don't think it's lost on any of us that you're drawing the contrast, and I think Mr. Verbrugge did as well, to say, you know, we do a disservice to the people most in need in this city if we're asking them to go to building X for basic care and, you know, they can come over here and see a ballet, and that's a very different experience. And I'm guessing most of the Venn diagram on that's pretty thin. So I understand and I appreciate you for sticking with it and that all your staff still plans to retire, even though they're retiring out of that. So that's amazing. I did want to ask a little bit about additional mobile services and whether or not, like, I know we have the ARPA fund and the mobile service, is there a thought that adding more of that would help you reduce potentially the footprint that you might need, either from a leasing perspective or in another building that the city might have? Is that, was that a consideration, or could that be a consideration if we did a, you know, a lease on additional vehicles or something to that effect to offset that, especially since transit is, you know, potentially an issue? Just curious if that was a thought?
Mr. Mayor, councilmember DeLisandro? We have not put our mobile vehicle in the field yet. And so before we would commit to more of a mobile process, I would like to see that process working. Our intention is, we will have a trailer, it's in our parking lot right now, waiting to get wrapped, that's in the field in apartment complexes, parking lots, four days a week, where we're bringing service to clients, but we have two stalls in there. So we will have a little bit of a reduction in what we can do on that site, but we're anticipating that will change some of the demand in the building as we bring services to our clients. But it's too early for us to tell us how much and if we can do that in a broader scale yet.
I appreciate that, thanks. This is probably more of a question for you, Mr. Verbrugge. What is our, I'm just kind of curious, let's say, we go at it again and we're not successful in getting these, when are we going to just put in the CIP and build a new facility? Like, when is that happening for these folks? They've been over twenty years waiting for it, it sounds like, if I can do the math on that. It's twenty years past its useful life from a, you know, from that perspective. Like, when do we just, like, cut to the chase and be like, okay, we're going to do something?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, councilmember DeLisandro? That's a fantastic question, and I will maybe give you a bolder answer than I have in the past. We have, for the last number of years, conceived of trying to resolve a couple of issues together with our Community Health and Wellness Center, so that we can find synergy by putting public health together with the Community Center project. I think there is a lot of benefit to doing that. If we are unsuccessful in the effort with the local option sales tax and potentially with the referendum of voters, I think that the council should have a discussion immediately about how you want to prioritize and proceed with items that are in the CIP. I have a tremendous amount of empathy for our staff in public health who have heard us say for the last seven or eight years now that we're getting to it, we're getting to it, and it keeps getting put on the back burner. And frankly, I don't think that's a message that we can continue to repeat. It's ultimately going to be up to the city council to make that decision about when and how you want to move forward. We're trying to find the way that is going to be the most affordable, least burdensome for Bloomington property taxpayers, which is why we continue to pursue the local option sales tax, because those projects relieve Bloomington taxpayers of quite a bit of property tax cost. And we think from a financial perspective, that is the right thing to do. If we're continuing to be unsuccessful in that endeavor, I think the council should have a discussion about what the priorities are for moving forward.
Thanks.
So Dr. Kelly, I'm sorry, councilmember Nelson?
It was my fault I was late on that, so, thank you, Mayor. Just a few questions, just for a quick clarification here. What we're talking about right now does not spend any money, this is an investigative process to see what's in the marketplace, engage with an agent, figure that out. Is that accurate?
Dr. Kelly?
Mr. Mayor, councilmember Nelson, it would, the, what we understand most of the engagement with a real estate agent or a professional in that capacity is, we'd have to negotiate and figure out what that is. Often, it's a, if you lease, there's a commission or some other aspects to that. And so it'd be us engaging, getting somebody on board, and then we'd have some additional conversations down the road about, like, if we found a space, what that looks like and some of that process. But right now, it's mostly that figuring it out, getting somebody on board that we're working with to do this work, with additional conversations down the road.
Okay. And then for clarification of that, if there was going to be a lease, that would come back to the council prior to the execution? So that's when they, I mean, I get that they'd have a commission, real estate commission on that, but there wouldn't be any fees upfront to do the investigative part?
Mr. Mayor, councilmember Nelson, the conversations that we've had so far are mostly, it's mostly been commission-based. Sometimes there's other ways people get paid for that work. And so we're going into it thinking it's mostly going to be on a commission end, but we won't know certainty in that until we have some of those conversations.
Okay. And then I'd just like to echo some of my colleagues' comments with regards to looking at places here, potentially the DMV, which is close by there, and I don't know how that's being utilized at this point, although not, I think it suffers from some of the same challenges. And then I would also just encourage you to reach out to Richfield and Edina to talk if they have any space and, you know, especially with the hybrid model, and there may be a service providing process that's helpful with our partners there, and so maybe something good. I will be honest that I'm, it's, we need a long-term solution, and it's tough to hear that we're going to have a four to five-year solution that costs significantly more than $500,000. And so as soon as we can get to that long-term, I think is better. With that said, so the part of the reason I bring that up is, when you look at lease, I actually think you should look at lease as a potential long-term solution, not just the short-term solution. If we're going to invest funds for build-out and things like that, to have that just gone after four years is a significant amount of money, you know, to build out a commercial space that for four years may or may not make sense in the long run to do things. And there are some advantages to being maybe if we go the lease route in more of a medical office-type facility in terms of a lot of the services that are provided through here. And because of the change of the marketplace, I would not take lease off the table as the long-term solution, the costs and all of that stuff involved in that. Lastly, I do think in terms of messaging and things, I do, I think we have an honest challenge here to say that a building built in the sixties is obsolete. The vast majority of our housing stock was built in the sixties or before. I mean, I live in a house that was built in sixty-five, it had radiators, I put a furnace, air conditioner system in it because I was tired of, you know, changing out my window air conditioners every season. You know, that's just a tough sell, I think, to a lot of people in the community, that a brick building built in the sixties just can't do anything with it. And I think we need to take a look at that again and see if that is a possibility. And if, candidly, if you can provide services for two weeks without the building at all, could we find a hybrid model that would work within the existing facility and invest the money it took to bring it up and take care of that? So I would leave, I would still leave remodeling that facility and making it nice and in there, because what I'm hearing is maybe we don't need as much space as we thought we did. I mean, we were at 20,000 and now we're down to 11,000, and that's not much more than 9,000, and we got by for two weeks and still continue to deliver services. And don't get me wrong, I imagine that was a huge challenge for your team to do. I'm not saying that would be easy, and I'm not saying that's viable in the long term necessarily, but I think it's something to explore. Because I just, I'm very concerned about spending a significant amount of money for a short-term Band-Aid solution and then just walking away from that money. And I think that's my biggest concern.
Thank you, councilmember, good points, all good points. Any additional questions, comments? I did hear, and to echo what I think councilmember Nelson said, I heard you sneak in the notion of if we can find space here in the city of Bloomington. And I appreciate the fact that there may not be the perfect space, and we are partners with Richfield and Edina as well. And, I mean, I for one would hate to see the Bloomington Department of Public Health in Richfield, but would certainly understand if that's the case, because there would be no, there aren't viable options here in the city of Bloomington. So something to think about there. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So just to clarify, I don't think I understood the answer when councilmember Nelson asked it. So before a decision is made on a lease or whatever the solution is, it will be back in front of the council? Correct?
That is correct, councilmember.
Thank you. I personally will say that I really hope that the city of Bloomington employees stay in the city of Bloomington. I know that's, because maybe I'm not being very sensitive to the fact that Bloomington Public Health also serves Richfield and Bloomington, but those are contractual relationships and like, I don't know, I just feel like as city staff of the city of Bloomington, I would want to stay with my colleagues in the city of Bloomington that I'm working in, that I'm employee of, and so that's just my two cents on that.
No, and I agree with you, councilmember. That's why I prefaced it with, I would hate to see that happen, but understand that the reality might be different than our desires here. So it'll be interesting. Dr. Kelly, thank you very much. Go forth, come back, and we'll continue this conversation.
Thank you.
All right? Thank you. Council, that brings us to item 5.4 on our agenda, our final agenda item this evening, City Council Policy and Issue Update. I will start with a recap, a quick recap of our twenty, of our 2:27 listening session this evening, February 27th, earlier this evening. We actually had a busy evening, we had a full house this evening, and it was, once again, a good chunk of people with new issues and new things that we hadn't heard before, and I'm glad we could, had a chance to talk to them. Mr. Edward Schmidt was there, and he had a code enforcement issue regarding a trailer in his driveway, and brought up actually an issue that we have talked about here on this council in the past, the difference between a work trailer and a recreational trailer. And so we had a good discussion with Mr. Schmidt, and I know that legal staff had a good discussion with him out in the hall as well. We heard from Kristen Stifter regarding city code enforcements and nuisance orders allegations that she has with her neighbors. Again, it was an opportunity to hear her concerns and then to commit to sitting down and trying to answer some of her questions and trying to find a way to answer those questions and answer some of the concerns that she has with her neighbors, but to hear them first in the council and then to assign her a staff member, I think was a helpful way of addressing some of the issues she was bringing forward. Sally Ness asked the council to reconsider the vote that we took on February 6th to allow retail and medicinal in R1, in specific to Northwestern Health Sciences, and we had, I will turn it over to the council as we get further into item 5.4 here, if there would be a motion to reconsider that vote, that would be the appropriate time to do so, and that's what I promised Sally we would do, to consider that. We heard from Jason Rendon and Charlene Schley regarding the short-term rental standards in the city of Bloomington, and brought forth some interesting points and interesting discussion topics with their testimony to us. And finally, heard from Michelle Voggie and Ashley Keith with the Continental Ballet Company, and they brought forward a funding request to extend the performance season and extend some of the offerings made by Continental Ballet, wondering, they were looking They were looking for up to $100,000 from the city. They were sent back with the request for more information, the request for who else they've been looking... Working with or looking for funding from, and just a little bit more detail, a little bit more information on that request before any decisions were made and as we continue the conversation. So that was our recap of our listening session earlier this evening. Did I miss anything, counsel? Very good. Mr. Verbrugge, what do you have on your agenda this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I actually have a request for council that... I don't do this very often, but I'm going to ask you if you are willing to take some action here, and it is this. Our travel policy requires, you know, our travel policy for council requires that the travel must be approved in advance. We don't have a provision in our travel policy if there is something that comes up in between council meetings and there is travel that needs to happen and can't be pre-approved. So learned today that there is a meeting in Washington, DC that may involve the mayor. And so the cost for this would be probably less than $1,000 because it would be just a quick in and quick out. And so what I would like to ask the council, if you're amenable to doing it, is to authorizing travel of approximately $1,000 for the mayor to Washington, DC. And if it does happen, we'll come back next Monday, and we will ratify with details after that, once we have the more specific costs. And I've also talked to the city attorney and just put it on the radar that we're going to review the travel policy and try to accommodate these types of situations that pop up.
Counsel, questions on that? So with that, counsel... Councilmember Carter?
Um, can you allude to what the request is for? I guess I'm just curious what the kind of last-minute nature is.
Chair, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Carter, it involves Minnesota leaders and congressional delegation of issues important to Minnesota and Bloomington at the federal level.
Do you want me to just extend my time here, and I'll take the meetings for the mayor? Just kidding. I don't want to do that anyway. Yeah, I would... I'm, in general, I'm supportive of that, and I do think it's something that we should address in our actual policy for when these things happen.
Counsel, any other questions? I think officially, what I would look to do is, based on what Mr. Verbrugge brought forward, look for a motion and a second and to take a formal vote that we approve this... What are we referring to it as? Expedited travel?
Yeah.
Same cost? How do you want to phrase it?
Yeah, travel for the mayor of approximately $1,000 to Washington, DC. So if that's the motion, I've made it.
Motion by Councilmember Lowman, second by Councilmember Dalisandro. Any other discussion on this, counsel? Hearing none? Mr. Brillert?
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Mua? Aye. Lowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Dalisandro? Mayor Bussi?
Aye. Motion carries 7-0. So stay tuned for additional details to follow here in the near future.
Counsel, anything else to bring forward on item 5.4? Councilmember Lowman and then Councilmember Dalisandro.
Just two real quick things, Mayor. You had mentioned earlier one of our residents' requests to bring forward a motion to reconsider an item that was on the 4.2... Oh, pardon me, on the February 6th agenda, which was entitled 4.1, Public Hearing Privately Initiated City Code Amendment, College, University Retail, and Medical Offices. I am not bringing that motion forward. I just wanted to just make one clarification. I think there was just a little bit of confusion during that conversation that I wanted to point out to that resident. I had asked the question about if we were to create another zone in that particular area and then place the university in that zone, if we could do that. And then the city planning manager had mentioned that that would fall under the case of spot zoning. And so I just wanted to just clarify, that was the conversation around spot zoning. I think there's just a little bit of confusion there. And for those reasons, I cannot move forward with... Because this is not spot zoning. This is in a R1 zone. It's conditional use. It just didn't make any sense what the resident was bringing forward. I just think they're a little bit confused, and I just want to just clarify that. And so there's just no way that this council member is going to support any motion to reconsider. But I did want to at least consider it and just see if anybody out here would like to reconsider that that was brought forward on February 6th. I'm seeing nothing, Mayor? So then I'll move on to my second item.
Please.
So Mayor, I know that it was several council groups back, this body, I believe, had some type of conversation about the Veterans Memorial out front. And I know that a number of staff have come to me, and at the time, we weren't utilizing, you know, that front area the way that we are today, you know, with all the programming. And we just talked about that earlier today with the Human Rights Commission. And I know that we have a number of new council members here, and that these staff members have come to me and kind of said, "Hey, you know, how does that work?" And I just... I would hate to see us kind of go into bringing that memorial forward without having... And I'm not saying we should have this conversation now with this laid out, but I wonder if it does make some sense to kind of readdress that or talk about that at least. Does it make sense to kind of continue forward with what we kind of had planned? One council kind of pushed that forward, and now we have a different use case now out there. You know, does that work and make sense? So I just want to throw that to you, Mayor and manager, for consideration. I don't know what we decided a number of years back, but I just... Things are different. We've got different groups of folks here, and I wanted to just have that dialogue.
And thank you, Councilmember. I think what we decided a few years back, and we made the commitment to offer that land to the group Bloomington Remembers Veterans for the location of the Bloomington Veterans Memorial. Yes, it was different at that time. It wasn't as programmed as it is now. I'll certainly give you that. But I do think if we want to continue or reopen that discussion, we have to keep in mind that, yes, we did make that commitment to that group. And it was a significant commitment, but I think it was one that both the city and the group were strongly in favor of because of the central location, because of its proximity here to City Hall, just because it's in a prominent location, and it seemed like the right place for it. If the council wants to reopen that discussion, we certainly could. If there's four nodding heads here, we could reopen that discussion, I guess. I think if we want to maybe consider a few more options and consider what the possibilities, the pros and cons might be before we get full into a discussion on it, I think that might be the better way to go, to really consider if this is what we want to do or if we want to honor the commitment we made or if there are other options available. I'm... I guess I would leave it to the council to decide if we really want to move forward with that kind of thing or not. Councilmember Carter, input?
Yeah, I guess also just maybe clarifying a little bit. So am I understanding correctly that the idea is to revisit whether we would honor our commitment to the veterans group to have the memorial where currently, like, they... I mean, they... Didn't they pay for an architect to draw up all the plans based on that site? Yeah, I would not feel comfortable backpedaling at this point, especially since they're asking for bonding right now, the legislature. Like, I feel like that would be... Do some harm to the relationship that we have with them, and I just... I would not be supportive of that.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I tend to agree with Councilmember Carter in terms of that, but I would, you know, I have not heard the concerns, and so I'd maybe ask the city manager if you might be able to put something together if there are staff concerns. And, you know, my guess is there's probably a more simple way of addressing those concerns and making both the uses come together in a way that makes sense. I'd think maybe Councilmember Lowman was kind of talking to that, that we want to make sure it works for both parties there. And so it would be helpful for me to have more information about what those other staff concerns are. But I think, you know, we made a commitment. I think it's going to be a great location, and I think the fact that, if I recall correctly, the fact that we thought there might be more programming there was a benefit. You know, we wanted people to see this really beautiful tribute that's there, and so I guess that's... I probably said enough on that. I think you get the gist of it.
Councilmember Dalisandro?
Yeah, just to provide the new person plus... Well, not as new. Thanks for that. But also the resident concerns. I think that there are a group of residents who don't understand that that's a done deal, and I think that that needs to be clarified. I wasn't sure that it was even when I started talking to people. So because I think that decision was made probably in 2017 or 2018. So it goes further back than most of us sitting on council right now. And so I can't speak to it intelligently. And so I, you know, I think having the historical reference for that. In the meantime, as we have created programming like our farmer's market, like the Wednesday night thing, like Pride and all these things, nobody's mentioned that it is a temporary thing that's going to have to go away when we have this memorial there because the amphitheater that those bands use won't be there anymore. It will be replaced with a very solemn and important memorial. And I think that that's great. Don't get me wrong, I'm not against the site, but it does completely change the characteristic. It's not a place you have a band. It's not a place you have, you know, lots of kids running around hanging off of it and all that kind of stuff. It completely changes the characteristic of our lawn, and that's not bad. It's just different. And we've set people's expectations over COVID especially that it can go one way and it's going to go completely in a different way. So I think the conversation is worth having. I'm not suggesting we, you know, go back on the commitment or anything like that, but I think we need to explain it to folks because that's all I've heard, actually. The conversation about having it for the memorial is not... The only people that are talking about that are the people that are working on the memorial. Everybody else is talking about all the other uses for the city civic plaza. So it's worth closing the gap. Yeah, thanks.
So am I hearing a discussion is warranted here or...
I'm not sure there's anything to be done about it as much as to make sure that we have that clarified for people and that, you know, if you are thinking now, because they are at bonding, where are you going to put the farmer's market? Like, that would be good to tell people now because it can't be there anymore. So, you know, like, how do you deal with that? Like, we should just get prepared for that, yeah.
Mr. Verbrugge, if we could maybe look to staff and frame up this discussion and exactly where the...
Have some additional messaging, Mr. Mayor?
Additional messaging and what the official commitment was and where... When that commitment was made and with what rationale in mind.
We'll bring that back. Thank you.
Councilmember Carter?
Um, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so I guess I would just say that I agree that getting clarity would be good. I was never under the impression that all other programming had to stop, no more farmer's market there. Like, I never was... Have been told that, so I guess I would help... It would be helpful for me, too, to have clarity. I assumed that the farmer's market could go on in the parking lot where it always goes on and that there would be space for other kinds of programming, too. And so just as much as I... I mean, I still stand, of course, firm that I would not want to go back on our commitment, but I guess I just didn't realize that our commitment was then that there were trade-offs, that there were that substantial.
I'm with you, Councilmember Carter. I never thought that it would completely eliminate the farmer's market and other programming completely. Yes, to Councilmember Dalisandro's point, it would change, certainly, but I don't think it's going to eliminate things. I mean, we talked about a performance hall headed out that direction as well, and so I mean, there's a lot of room there, and there's a lot of possibilities in terms of how we can program the space, the green space to our... To the east of our city hall. We good with that, counsel?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor, for something.
I've completely lost track of who wanted to speak now. I know Councilmember Carter and Councilmember Dalisandro. Councilmember Carter?
Um, thanks, Mayor. I just have two quick things. So Councilmember Mua and I have an upcoming town hall, so I just wanted to say that publicly. It's going to be on Saturday morning on March 11th, I believe. I think I should probably hit... Yes, March 11th, and it'll be from 10:00 to 11:30. We chose that time to hopefully make it a little bit easier for families with young kids to come out, and we did request that we would have some help with some childcare. I'm not sure if that's for sure happening or not, but hopefully it is, and hopefully me just saying it out loud here tonight means it's going to maybe happen. Looking at you, Jamie.
I know.
And the second thing that I wanted to just mention, so I am the council appointee on the State Community Health Services Advisory Committee, which advises MDH staff and the Commissioner of Health on issues related to public health across the state. It's mostly county commissioners and public health administrators, but of course, in the metro, we're a little bit different, and so I am... Actually, I might be one of the only council... I think I might be the only council member, but anyway. We've had some really great meetings recently, and I was... Just wanted to let you all know that Commissioner Mandy Meisner from Anoka is going to be our regional representative on that executive committee, and then I'm going to be the alternate. So we'll start attending the executive meetings of Shack as well. So just a little bit of a heads up and update there.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Dalisandro?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two quick... Two quick follow-ups. I think I had asked this... I don't... Not sure if I asked this in a meeting or not, but I think one of the questions I had asked a while back was I would like to get an update on the 2022 positive budget variance dollars that we agreed to spend, just to get a status on how we spent those. I have been to the gym here, so I know it's nice, but, you know, we could get a formal update on where all those projects that we funded were. And I think the traffic study was one, and then the jail and the gym, and there were a couple of others. So if we could get a status on all of those, so we know what's complete and how people like it and all that kind of stuff, that'd be great. And the second thing was, I think we talked a couple of council member or council meetings ago about the idea of variances in licensing. We talked... We said we have variances as it relates to land use, but we don't have variances as it relates to licensing, and we talked a little bit about that in light of, for example, a couple of the folks that would like to... Who sell tobacco today, who would like to sell THC and cannot because of their location because we didn't treat the THC license the same as we treated tobacco as it relates to where they're located and all that kind of stuff. So if we could follow up on that, that'd be great. And then two other things. Should we have a positive budget variance? I would like to make an early plug. I had the wonderful opportunity, and it's related to my last point, which is I was lucky to stand in for the mayor on the 18th of February when the fine folks who run our neighborhood block captain programs were all here, getting an update from our police department and our city staff. It was an awesome time. The plaza here, the hallway, was full of all the different services that we have. Our friends from Maria's Voice was here to talk about how our partnership with them is supporting domestic violence and sexual violence victims and survivors. I bring that up because John Carlson was here from our animal control facility, and there is a punch list of very necessary, and I think less than 100 grand we're talking type of things that could be done to really improve the state of affairs within the animal control facility, like a fence where they could take the dogs outside, for example, and putting a window in the kennel area because right now that room doesn't have a window, and that means that dogs and cats are in solitary confinement essentially for hours and hours on end. If they're already in a situation where they are afraid and away from their homes, adding that stress on top, we know what it does to humans. I can promise you it does it to animals as well, especially companion animals. There are things we can do, and I promised them that I would make a pitch early on, first in line, give me some positive budget variance or give me some strategic priorities fund, and let's get 50, 80 grand over to him to really do some great things for our animal control facility. And that is it for me. I hope you all feel okay with that. Everybody here likes animals, right? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dalisandro. Mr. Verbrugge?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Dalisandro, it is very sad when you go over to the animal facility and you see the little kitties and dogs with their tin cups running along the bars. It's very... It's a sad scene, so you want to...
Counsel, is there anything else?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to make here... I know that it's cute and all, but I'm serious. I really do care that this thing gets some traction, so please don't make fun of me, or if you're making fun of me while you're spending the money, that'd be great. So please don't make fun of me, or if you're making fun of me while you're spending the money, that'd be great. Thank you.
Counsel, we have come to the end of our agenda, and I would look for a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn this evening. No further council discussion on this. Mr. Brillert?
Carter?
Aye.
Mua?
Aye.
Lohman?
No.
Nelson?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Dalisandro?
Aye.
Lohman again? Mayor Bussie?
Aye.
Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you very much, counsel, for your work this evening. Thanks to the staff. Thanks to everybody who participated tonight. Thank you for being here. Have a good rest of your week, folks.